Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We'll call the county board meeting to order. For the meeting on February 22, 2022. A roll call would show all commissioners are here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right. The first item is approval of the agenda. Everyone should have the agenda either electronically in front of you or on paper form. Any, any changes to the agenda, additions, corrections, or anything? No? Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have public access forum. Is there anyone here wishing to speak at the public access forum? And it would be on anything not on today's agenda. So if anybody is here to speak at the public access forum, you have three to four minutes. You can step up to the microphone, state your name and address. Otherwise, I don't think we have anybody remotely.
We do not.
Okay, if there's, yes, come up and state your name and address, please.
Ron Philippi, 11968 County Road 51. We're having issues with Milk and Honey. One of the issues is special events. The CUP allows them to have up to 12 per year. Last year, they exceeded that by quite a bit. And we'd like to have this resolved because their special events already started in January. I hammered out packets. There's a lot of information in there. That kind of explains what, but they came for an examples for special events. And another issue we had was with the loud music when they had bands outside. Now, we think that issue may be resolved because the township helped us with that. So hopefully that one's resolved. So I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mike Fluger at 12014 County Road 51. And it's to do with Milk and Honey and with Shelley Benson. We feel that she does not have the neighbors' interest in hand. She's more interested in Milk and Honey. The reason I say that is two years ago, when we had the meeting, when Milk and Honey didn't get what they wanted, she was so distraught, she forgot to turn her microphone off and was telling Peter she couldn't believe he didn't get what he asked for. And then she had a private meeting with him. Fast forward to last year, I called her to complain about the loud music and she's, and told her, we've been calling Stearns County deputies out there every weekend. She said, she looked into it. There was no violations. I sent her a copy, emailed her a copy of State of Minnesota Regulations on Noise Pollution. She didn't reply to that. I sent her another email saying, so Milk and Honey can play their music as loud as they want with no regards for the neighbors. No reply to that. We finally ended up going to the township who has been working with us, trying to help us resolve this. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Flaton. I'm at 11843 County Road 51. Thanks for letting me speak here today. I just wanted to reemphasize the points of my neighbors and just to express the continued dissatisfaction and growing concern with the Milk and Honey cider establishment on the road from us. When the business came to the area, it was presented to the neighbors as a brewery and with a tasting area. And it's certainly not consistent with that definition anymore. Rather, it's become, you know, like they mentioned, a bar and event center. The events attract large crowds. They often include loud music. So loud, we can't really escape it whether we're outside our house or inside our house. The area certainly isn't equipped for the increased traffic. Just by the nature of the business, we have seen an increase in impaired drivers in our area. And it is only exacerbated by these long events when people spend long times at the brewery. Our U-shaped driveway is just down the road, so if their patrons happen to miss their turn, it's an attractive option to use as a turnaround. And, you know, we have a family, we have boys, we're outside, you know, it just, it puts us at risk. And frankly, it violates our privacy. These conditions were not here when we selected this area for our home. It's kind of being forced on us and it's negated a lot of the qualities that brought us to the area. I guess, like, these guys are just here to ask for some help to advocate for the residents and kind of the little guy in the matter. We just want to kind of regulate what they're, you know, able to do. And then just also prevent any further expansion. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public access forum? One last time, anyone else wishing to speak? All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Everyone have a chance to look through the consent agenda? Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Persky? I think number three has given us some attention. I think maybe we should pull that for discussion.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to take it at the front here or we want to wait for environmental services.
Can we just put it under environmental services and then we have them up front? Okay, we'll do that. Okay? Any other ones?
I would like number eight pulled, please.
Number eight? Okay. Do you want to, let's see, do we have parks? Do you want to just discuss it? Or you want to have it voted on separately?
I would like to vote on it separately.
Okay, so we'll pull number eight. Anything else? Otherwise, motion to approve consent with the exception of three and eight.
I'll move that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Mergan. They're second. Second by Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. As long as Ben's here, why don't we address Commissioner Mergan's item number eight? Morning, Ben.
Morning, Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Parks Director.
I have some questions on, on number eight. Who is this being purchased from? And Commissioner Notch sent me what you had sent him, and I looked at the two quotes that were there, and neither one of those are from somebody building that's in Stearns County and pays the taxes in Stearns County. And I would, really, on something like this, I think the people that pay those taxes, and they're not small taxes that they pay. For instance, out in St. Martin, there's the Painesville has a couple implement dealers, Kimball has one. There are other ones within the county that, and Lake Henry, they should be given the opportunity to at least bid on these things. And I think, I'd like to see this delayed until those people also get a chance to put in, put in a bid. Give them the specifications and they can come up with, with their bid. People in Stearns County have paid the taxes, should be able to at least bid on the thing. If they don't meet the requirements, they don't meet the requirements. But they should be given the option.
Thank you for those comments. I can say that when we did bid these out, we did go to the local entities for the CAT. But the CAT quote and the one that we're recommending going with, that actually got shipped out of county because it's a state contract. So that's the best price through the state contract, and the local CAT dealer wouldn't even look at bidding it out. Because it goes, so then we get a 20%, about a 20% discount. So if you look off the top, the base price of the CAT skid loader was eighty-some thousand dollars, and then the our price would, well, eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And then based off a state contract, that actually went down to sixty-four thousand six hundred dollars. So we're already saving seventeen, almost eighteen thousand dollars off the top of what somebody else would pay.
So this is the only model you're considering?
Nope.
All these others?
Nope. So like in the email that was sent to Commissioner Notch, we also, we talked to a bunch of local contractors, and we talked to a couple rental companies. And CAT and Bobcat are the two skid loaders that were recommended through those entities. We did look at a third one. But neither the rental company or the contractor suggested going with that one because it just doesn't hold up as well.
But did you go out to any of these implement dealers and actually talk to them?
Our maintenance coordinator went out and went, like I said, we do go local first. And when he went out and talked to these local entities, then it got pushed out to, you know, further.
Because I would like to see something from them saying, you know, yeah, we were contacted and and we couldn't provide this, you know, Kimball, St. Martin, Lake Henry. Because there's nothing in here that physically, in writing, says they were given the option.
Okay. I guess we certainly can go back and, and look at those entities. They may not have a CAT or a Bobcat.
Or maybe they could defend their product. If they don't have that, they could defend their product and say, it's just as good, or maybe it's not. But I would like to see them given the option. They pay enormous taxes in this county.
Sure.
Any other comments? Well, if not, I guess our options are either we can approve this request and then request any further purchases include these locals. Or if your wishes are to push this back and have Mr. Anderson contact the locals and send back a separate bid sheet, we can go that route too.
Mr. Chair?
It sounds like that they were contacted and they couldn't meet the specifications or the cost. I totally support Commissioner Mergan. The concept, a question I'd have is are we going to start requiring, I don't know that we should start requiring staff to get, bring us back things in writing to prove that they've had these communications? So that, that would be a concern. I'd have, just, it seems like we're putting more, more layers of government and if we're requiring that. But certainly a local first. It sounds like you're trying to do local first. Local first is something we want to, and then we could decide whether we're sticking with lowest bid, which the state contract might require us to, or if we're doing something that's more of a best value, which you can factor something else in.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I was going to make a similar comment. I would say, you know, if Ben can contact them, if they can beat that price, I would be comfortable with that. If not, then we just move forward.
I guess I won't support it until I can see something in writing once. And this has happened before. Several years ago where the local people were not involved at all.
Hasn't that changed though?
Commissioner Persky?
Say, Ben, what's the timeline on this? Can we wait till next meeting?
We can. It just keeps pushing it, you know, back further, you know. Commissioner Mergan, we do go to local first, as, I mean, as best we can. But, you know, it's out of our control if we ask for a bid from CAT from a local dealer that deals CAT and they, you know, they go to the state bid that then comes out of St. Paul for that dealer. You know, we looked at, you know, I feel like we did our due diligence. We went through, we asked several contractors throughout the county that were all local contractors. We, we went through, vetted, you know, these, you know, these entities that serve. We identified the two that we thought would suit our purposes best. And then, you know, got those quotes from the local entities that we can. We didn't drive down to Monticello or, or wherever to get a quote from somebody on a Bobcat, you know, we do go local. And sometimes they can meet our needs and sometimes they just say, we're three years out and we don't have a chance. So they won't bid it.
Okay, which local contractors? Were you, did you contact and they said they couldn't meet it?
Well, then like, I don't know if the entity out of Painesville, are they a CAT dealer or a Bobcat dealer, or do they only deal in Kubota or John Deere?
There's a few different ones in Painesville, I know.
Okay.
What about St. Martin? Did you contact them?
I don't. I have to talk to my maintenance coordinator. So, I mean, the other thing, we can certainly go to every entity in, in the county and ask for the best price, but it all takes time as well. You know, so we're trying to be most as efficient as we can with our time. And the state contract, that's a set bid that the state has that technically we don't even have to. And I'm not saying we shouldn't because we always do, because a lot of times we get better prices than just state contract. If we do go to our local entities, like on our truck or our, our SUV that we just purchased, you know, we got a better deal than what state contracts. So we do do our due diligence, due diligence to vet that out.
And you get a better deal that way, no problem. I don't have a problem with that. But I would like to know that these people were at least given the opportunity.
Okay. And I know we've had this, we've had this conversation in the past, and I, and I guess, my opinion is I, I feel staff would probably do, you know, the best they could to get the best price. I mean, it's, because they're dealing with their budget dollars as well, so, you know, if they're not being prudent. I, I guess I feel, I, I don't want to be micromanaging any of the departments, but I feel they, they should have the capacity to make those decisions, and I would have to assume they're making them based on the residents of Stearns County.
I don't want to micromanage either.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So I, I think the concern that you raised, we addressed several years ago. I mean, there had been a question about this. So from a policy governance, it's for a policy board. I mean, we've said that we would like to go local first, and we know that there are sometimes some other things like where can you get the best deal? So I, I'm concerned about us micromanaging or us asking, so I don't mean to be totally repeating what you just said. If Ben's telling us they have gone and, and asked, and this is what the best that's come back, then to me, that's where we need to go. Because otherwise, we're Ben saying you should bring every piece of communication to us, and that's not a policy board. That would be something else.
No, with email, it's not that difficult to contact these different individuals.
But if they've already done, what I'm hearing you say is that you, your maintenance, the person who does this reached out to people. And this is what, after they were not able to, to meet this, this is where we've wind, we've wound up. You're asking for them to go back. What I'm hearing you say, maybe a misunderstanding, is to go back and ask again or triple check to make sure that anybody is out there, and that's us doing their, their work. And I have to say, I, I actually am going to move passing this because I'm not sure it's going to change anything.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, did you contact Lake Henry?
No, we did not contact every single
Did you send an email, did you send an email to St. Martin?
I need to go back and ask my maintenance coordinator who bid this out. I know, you know, he would have went to whoever deals in CAT and Bobcat, and then the other one we looked at was Kubota.
And all I'm asking is, I'd like assurances that these are local people which pay the taxes here were reached out to. That's all I'm asking.
Are you asking for those that actually sell the products?
Pretty much every implement dealer will sell some sort of a skid loader.
Okay, well, we need a motion one way or the other.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Lenzmeyer and a second by Commissioner Clark to approve. Any further discussion? Commissioner Persky?
Just a comment. I believe we use, you know, the state bidding for public works equipment and also for patrols from the Sheriff's Department. So I, I guess this is just a similar type of, you know, usage that we do as far as acquiring equipment, so. But I, I, I think your point is well taken, Jeff, that, you know, there are local people that can make a dollar from it and give us a better price, that we, they should be able to at least have an eye.
And if they can't, they can't.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would hope staff's already doing that, even though, you know, they haven't provided us documentation to that effect. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Name.
Okay, do we need a roll call? Or?
Aye.
Aye.
Name.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Any other comments for Ben? As long as we got them up here? No? Okay, thanks. Okay, on to environmental services. Morning, Angie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Angie Berg, Environmental Services. We can go ahead and take the first item on our agenda, which is number 8687. Packet page D1. This is to consider a fee waiver request submitted by Gary Glaw. Recommended board action is to motion to approve or deny the $750 fee waiver as requested by Gary Glaw for an interim use permit for the vacation home rental and the vacation home rental consult for lodging. My understanding is the board did adopt a policy for fee waivers, which is included in your packet. Shelley Benson, our director, put together a request based on the information that the board would like to know for this. I won't go through all of that. You probably read through that. What I will say is that, and is indicated in this letter as well from Shelley, is that the day I was submitting the county board agenda item for the public hearing, I did call Mr. Glaw. And I asked him if he was going to withdraw his application and if he wanted a fee reimbursement. And he said, no, I would like to move forward on a public hearing. So, that's the, the part of the story that I can add to this. As Shelley indicated, the septic certification and the well work, those are private fees. Those aren't fees that were paid to the county. Those are fees that, that are required regardless of approval or denial in this case, and he was granted the permit. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, it looked like there was a department recommendation.
Yes, Madam, or, Mr. Chair. My understanding is that the department recommends denial because there was no error on the, in the processing of the interim use permit in doing the consultation for the vacation home rental. And again, the, the well and the septic fees are private fees paid to contractors. Thank you.
Commissioner Persky?
Angie, with this request, this would set a precedence somewhat as far as returning funds to somebody, would it not? I don't recall us having a case that was quite, quite the same as this one where we did return the funds. Do you?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, I, I don't. Certainly in a situation where it was approved.
Yeah.
And the whole idea behind the department offering the fee to be reimbursed was because it was unusual circumstance that the county had our hearing and then Munson acted in moratorium. And so we felt it was fair that we give our money back if they didn't want to proceed, and then they withdrew their application. As we keep working and talking about this, we just spend more of that money. And so I think that's why Shelley's recommendation is not to, not to refund that money.
Commissioner Persky?
And so then, but also, do we have the site visits involved by the commissioners as well, from the planning commission?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, they have time involved there as well, and they get reimbursed for that mileage and for their time.
Okay, any further discussion? Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion.
I can move that.
Okay, is your motion to recommend denial? I'm presuming our staff's recommendation? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then consent item number three.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is the planning commission's recommendation for a vacation home rental by Micah and Jamie Jolfs. And this is located in Wakefield Township. Planning Commission held their public hearing last Thursday and on a five to two vote recommended approval with the conditions listed in your decision memo. It has been the board's practice, if you choose not to concur with the planning commission, that you would schedule your own public hearing. If you wanted to do that, we would look at scheduling that for March 22nd.
Okay, Commissioner Persky, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, I'll, I guess I'll open up the discussion because my concern is that the, the last three vacation home rentals that we approved, we approved for three years. And this one comes in where the township has recommended a moratorium. However, their application did come in before the moratorium. And so the township had recommended that we go ahead and deny it or give them perhaps only one year approval on that. That was the recommendation from the township. The, the board went for, ahead and they did grant a five-year permit on the vacation home rental. My opinion would be is if, if it would be the desire of the board that we would only go three years, or if we want to take the desire of the township, we either go with one year or we do not pass it. So I'll leave that for other comments.
Commissioner Clark?
Sounds like we don't have that option right now. We need to do a public hearing. If we, I mean, that's what we would do. So what I understood was the neighbors came and were supportive of this. And that they would, if I recall correctly, this was going to be my question to you. I didn't get a chance to ask you beforehand, sorry, Angie, is the, to the extent there is a moratorium, that would be followed first? And then if it was lifted or they granted approval, then they would be able to use that. But if there is one for that time period, I get that it came in first, but isn't, is that the case or?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, Wakefield Township's moratorium did not apply to pending applications.
Okay.
That's unlike Munson.
Okay, that's, okay.
So this one could go, if the planning commission, if the board concurs the planning commission's decision, this could be a vacation home rental that could start now.
And neighbors were not opposing this?
There was a letter received from the adjacent neighbor and they were not opposing the, the rental, correct?
Okay.
And the only difference is a five-year
Right.
permit versus a one or a three
Right.
or denial?
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, we would either need a motion to conduct a public hearing or a motion to accept the findings of the planning commission.
I think I would move to, let's conduct a public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? If not, motion dies for lack of a second. Anyone else?
So, move approval of, of the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to concur to planning commission's recommendation. Further discussion? Commissioner Mergan?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I would be strongly opposed to going with five years with that recommendation under the fact that the last three, we had granted a three-year approval, and we've got the recommendation from the township with this situation with the vacation home rentals to give it some time. I think in the last meeting that we had, and we had discussion, we talked about having a probationary period. I think five years is more than probationary period for a new vacation home rental. So I would not support the five years. When it came down to the vote, I believe it was a matter of taking the whole vacation home rental in one package, and the five years was put in. And so it was just accepted as part of the package, whereas I think they could have had more debate and could have pulled that out and debated down to bring it down to three, but that's my opinion. So.
So a quick question with that, did anybody make a motion to change it to three?
No, the first motion came at five.
Okay.
Commissioner Mergan?
I'm gonna have to agree with Mr. Persky on this, that five years is more than a probationary period.
The only challenge is we don't actually have a policy yet about that. I think we're all interested in something like that.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing I would probably take out of it is that the township did request either a denial or a one year. And when I heard that, my initial thought was, well, you know, if they go with one year, they could waive the fee if they come back, you know, the second year. But I also understand if they're, I don't know if they're making improvements or doing something to the property, you know, it's, if they're gonna make an investment, but that would be their choice either way.
Right.
So.
I, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I don't know how you feel about it, but I would consider it to be a friendly amendment to make it three years because we've done the last couple at three.
Can we do that without doing our own public hearing?
Mr. Chair, your policy has typically, past practice has been to hold your own public hearing. I think one time on a mining operation in Luxembourg Township, you chose to
Thank you for reminding me.
you chose to do something other than hold a hearing. You amended the permit as you would today. Legally, I think you're okay either way, but if you want to go with your past.
We wouldn't want our practice to be.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Would, the township would have the authority to have a different timeframe than Stearns County, correct?
Correct.
We go to for clarification on that.
The only thing is, this would be enacted prior to their decision, so this one would stay in effect for whatever timeframe we do.
Okay.
Right.
And going forward, is that an option of the township? I just need a clarification. I'm not advocating either way. Just, can somebody offer a more informed opinion on this?
Go ahead, Angie.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, so I believe Wakefield recommended a year permit because that would coincide with their year moratorium. Wakefield Township, when they go through their moratorium and make a decision on what their ordinance is going to look like, their ordinance can be more restrictive, and their ordinance can say
Yeah.
one year, three years, five years. It can say no vacation home rentals. That's up to them. This, these that are kind of held in the abeyance right now with these moratoriums are a little bit unusual. So the answer is yes, the township can be different, but not on this one.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Clark?
I mean, when the folks put this in, there wasn't anything. I mean, they were, they were operating under the then existing rules, which is why I believe then the township didn't go and do it retroactive. Right? I mean, so they, there wasn't yet, I mean, they, they in good faith put this in, in that way. It's kind of too bad the Planning Commission didn't make some other motion, but.
And I believe the applicants wanted, was it ten years or fifteen?
Right.
I mean, they kind of advocated for that, I believe, at the meeting, but then the Planning Commission came back with five.
At least these folks have talked to their neighbors, which we've a long time have seen no people not talking to anybody.
Well, I guess Commissioner Clark offered up a friendly amendment to Mr. Mergan's motion, but.
I don't know whether, yes, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, and I would suggest if we did that, we'd just do it this one time. We don't want to be changing things.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Isn't there a third option here? Okay, we can't, the township, it doesn't apply here, but township going forward could have a different regulation than what we have. But isn't there really a third option? Could the applicant volunteer a different timeframe than the, what's called for by any unit of government?
Angie, you want to take that first?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, yes, they could, they could amend their request. I do not know if the applicants are here, because I was out of town last Thursday, so I don't know if Jules are here to make that request. But yes, you, that would be an option.
And relative to, relative to approval or denial, is, can that still be an option? Do we have to make a decision on the way it's been requested?
Angie?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think what I hear you say is can you make a decision based on what was requested or something, a shorter timeframe?
Yeah.
You can, you can do that. You can do a shorter timeframe. You can also go back. You can ask us to talk to the applicants and ask them to amend their request to three years. You do have time under our 60 days to do that. So you could, you could delay action and ask us to go to the applicants and request that they amend their, amend their application to three years. Or you could hold a public hearing. Or as Commissioner Clark indicated this one time, you could change it to three years, given the volatility of vacation home rentals and townships and everything else going on.
Yeah, we'll be looking at vacation permit issued in more detail in the near future. And is this like some of our land use approvals, is there a time limit for the board to make a decision? Otherwise, it goes into effect or does that apply in this case?
Angie?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, yes, under the 60-day rules we have until May 10th, Jennifer just messaged me. So we have, you have until May 10th to make a final decision on this.
All right.
Commissioner Persky, did you want to?
Yeah, just to clarify, if we're gonna go back to the applicant and ask them to make a change, it's, it's quite likely that we're gonna have some continued lobbying from the township as well. So the reality would be, that would be no different, I guess, than holding our own public hearing. So.
Right. And I guess the motion right now is to conduct, well, to conduct the.
No, to do five years.
The motion is to approve the recommendation. That's why I was asking.
Oh, okay.
It was a friendly amendment.
Oh, the first motion failed
Right.
for a second.
Right.
So, so you made, Lee made the motion.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer made, yeah, Lee made the motion. So I don't, Lee, are you, would you be comfortable with us changing it to five year, three years from five years? Or how do you want to proceed? Or do you want to table it?
Or do you want?
I would, I would hope that we'd be willing to leave that to the discretion of the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, let me make a recommendation. Let's call the question, and if we get a denial, then we clean the slate, okay?
Okay. So as the motion stands now, it's to approve the vacation home rental as per the Planning Commission with a five-year term, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call?
Commissioner Persky?
Neat. Had to work on the double negative there.
Commissioner Mergan?
Neat.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dodge?
Neat. Okay, motion fails. Okay, try this one more time.
Okay.
I was gonna say, so could, what if we just refer this back to staff for a conversation about whether the, the, the quester would do?
How about just requesting the table with?
Well, that's what I was trying to do before, but then he called the question. I was trying to just table it.
Okay.
All right, I'll move to table this, 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 this item, because it seems like a little bit more work needs to be done.
Okay.
Second, ma'am.
Okay, so basically, it's to be tabled to allow staff to contact applicants and.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
And if you can't work out a lower number, then maybe we'll be doing our own public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Chair, that was going to be my second question. If the applicants decline the request for amending their request to three years, does the motion include scheduling a public hearing so we don't have to come back?
How's that? Just to make it faster?
Yes. Well, I guess that would be here. You and Lee.
Yes, I'll change the motion. So, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner Persky?
You can read my eyes. Okay. My point would be then, if, you know, if they don't want to do it, then it doesn't move forward. We can just deny it.
Well, I think, my motion is that we'd have a public hearing. It was a split vote anyways, and it was five people that were saying aye. It wasn't even a four-three. So I think we'd have to have a public hearing. Our practice.
So basically, if they don't agree to this, then we're going to a public hearing, or staff will set up a public hearing. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Angie.
Mr. Chair, just to confirm, and Jennifer was just messaging me as, as we're talking here, the applicants emailed her and said they will agree to three years. And so my understanding from the board's action just now is that the permit would be granted for three years.
Yes. So how about just to make it clean? I, or Commissioner Lenzmeyer, do you want to move that we approve it at three years? The applicant just said they would agree to three years, which is what we were wondering.
All right, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, if we have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation with a change from a five-year permit to a three-year permit, based on the applicants agreeing to that via email. Any further discussion? Commissioner Persky?
I just want to recognize the township. You know, I think more and more we're seeing some involvement with townships, and I think that's a good thing.
Yep.
Because I think that, that allows them also then to, you know, establish their neighborhood, the character of what they want their landscape to be looking like, and I have no problem with that. So.
Plus, I think it gives them the chance, you know, to actually see it, because a lot of times, these things happen, and a lot of local townships, you know, don't even know it's a concern maybe because the residents probably come here first because it's through Environmental Services versus the township. So.
And, and, excuse me, Mr. Chair, with, and with these vacation home rentals, with the controversy that we're seeing, you know, there are going to be some townships that are going to embrace it, and there's some townships that are going to be restrictive, and I think we should allow them to do that.
Commissioner Clark?
Certainly agree, and I look forward and hope for a work session on, on this, just so that we're getting a better handle on it in a way that we can really be considering how to best be helping property owners and their neighbors.
All right.
Mr. Chair, based on that conversation, we won't talk anymore about vacation home rentals, other than the Planning Commission did have some discussion. Again, I wasn't at the meeting. My understanding is they want to take things slow, maybe six to 12 months out. I will go back and watch that part of the meeting. But, you know, the board can decide if you want to take things slower, if you want to take things faster. We can talk with Dr. Williams about potential work session, or certainly talk to Shelley or to Mike about your thoughts on that. Otherwise, at this point, we don't have anything, we won't be bringing anything back to you until the Planning Commission wants to talk about it again, and I don't think that's going to be anytime soon.
All I was gonna say is Commissioner Lenzmeyer was indicating earlier, this is something we talked about revisiting soon. And so us getting an opportunity and a work session to do that would be a helpful thing. And I think we've, we've tried, maybe it feels a little bit on the fly to give the Planning Commission some guidance, but we could probably do even a little bit better.
Okay. Did we hold the vote yet?
I think we need to vote.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Kind of going off there, so I wasn't sure if we.
Thank you.
All my friends are gonna vote on this.
I'm glad you did it, Carol.
All right, thanks, Angie. Next up, Public Works. Morning, Jody.
Good morning, everyone. Jody Tyke, county engineer. My first item today is on packet page 141, and it is related to a joint powers agreement with Rockaway Township, St. Wendell Township, Leesock Township, and the city of Sartell. I had a recent conversation, as has, as has Commissioner Persky, with Senator Howe, and if there is a joint powers agreement in place, he is willing to set money aside in a bill. I don't know if I should call it an earmark, but for the reconstruction of Townline Road, which is also known as 30th Avenue or 75th Avenue, depending where you are along that stretch of road, he would set aside money in a bill to fully reconstruct that section of roadway, including the engineering and ride of white costs. So this really is no different than if any township or small city received local road improvement program funding. We generally are the contract administrator because all funding needs to come through our office anyway. So there would be staff time involved. If this bill would pass and these entities would get funding, there would certainly be staff time involved for the county, but there is no financial obligation on our part other than that staff time. Thus far, Leesock Township, city of Sartell, and St. Wendell Township have approved this agreement. Rockaway Township, I believe, is considering it at their meeting this week. And so obviously, the county board, if they choose to approve, that would be contingent on Rockaway Township approving. So I'm asking the board to approve that joint powers agreement.
Commissioner Clark?
I certainly support that joint powers agreement. I am curious, however, since the legislature doesn't specify specific roads, they sometimes do descriptions that mean that nobody else could get the funding, or it potentially could be in a bond. I mean, what, what's the mechanism? Most of for chances of success?
It's my understanding that Senator Howe is drafting a bill specifically for this. I assume, and I could be wrong, that this will incorporate some of the surplus money potentially. It may be part of a special line item with the local road improvement program, if that gets additional funding this year. But he is drafting that bill in preparation for this joint powers agreement to be approved.
So you're not sure? I mean, honestly, he probably is gonna have to draft it so that nobody else could get it, but it doesn't actually say it because they don't do that for the same reason we don't do some other things around here. Otherwise, everybody would do it, because there isn't earmarks.
They have in the past put specific project line items with the local road improvement program.
Okay.
And so that may
I just wasn't getting that.
Maybe how it gets funded as well.
Okay, got it. Yep, that makes, that makes sense. I was gonna say, he could certainly indicate it. It has to be a priority within that. Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Persky, would you like to make a motion?
I will make that motion, but then I won't, I'll do the comment from, I'll preface it with a couple of comments. And we've had this improvement for Townline Road for a good number of years. We've been taking it to Washington on the local road improvements for rural roads. And yes, those entities, because we've got three townships and two cities that come together there, you know, they would like us to take it over. But we don't want to, do not want to take over that road with the financial burden that that would give us. So with them wanting to pursue that, the township of St. Wendell has two or three driveways on that. Their cost is $3 million or somewhere around that amount, and they do not have the funds to do that. So it would totally deplete their, their, their budget. So I'm very much in supportive of it. All the entities are in support of it, so I'll make that motion to move it forward.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it. Actually, I do think it's really exciting. I mean, it's, it felt like early hard slog on a federal level. So right now, if there's that opportunity on a state level, I think it's a great, great solution.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, for my next item. I wanted to give you a brief update on the local option sales tax discussions, and I'm hoping they will call up the presentation. So just to get this started, I had sent you all draft programs for several options and intended to go into the public input process in late January, early February. Obviously, with the COVID cases being high, and knowing there was a desire to have some in-person options as well as virtual options for that public input, I pushed it back a little bit. So just as an update as to where we are today and potentially an opportunity to get a little bit more input from the county board. Really briefly, you are all aware that we currently have a quarter percent local option sales tax that's to be used for transportation projects. We began collecting that on January 1st of 2018, and it will expire on December 31st of this year. Our collections to date have exceeded what our original estimates were. You can see that it's gone up. The revenue has grown every single year. Even in 2020, when that growth was a little bit slower, we actually expected a decline in revenues. But so the total to date is in excess of $26.3 million. You can see 2021 was $7.4 million. Just as a side note, our original estimates were $4.5 to $4.7 million annually. So the funding has certainly helped us complete additional projects above and beyond what would have been done with our road program. So already having been done, we've had a bridge replacement with this funding, three major intersection improvements, and an additional 62.6 miles of resurfacing. With this year's revenues, we still are going to do projects this year and next year with the revenues collected before December 31st. And that will be an intersection improvement project. That's the County Road 1 intersections up by the Rice Bridge, an additional over 14 and a half miles of resurfacing, and then 7.8 miles of reconstruction. And just as a reminder, the right-of-way costs and engineering costs for sales tax-funded projects, those costs are also covered by the sales tax. So as we move forward, we have several options, obviously. Do nothing, and that just means those sales tax collections would end on December 31st of this year. We can certainly extend what we're doing now with the quarter percent. We could increase the sales tax up to a half percent. We could also increase that sales tax up to a half percent and reduce the county levy by $1.2 million. Now I'll go into a little bit more detail with that when we get to that option. You also have the option of five years versus 10 years, and that's another thing I can go into in a little bit more detail more toward the end of the presentation. So the do-nothing option, I have increased that base program to 2027, so it's 2022 through 2027 right now, just so we would have apples-to-apples comparisons for all of these. The program would include nearly $91 million in construction through 2027. Like all the programs, we use $7.5 million in previously collected sales tax revenues in that 2023 to 2027 timeframe. And the county levy-funded portion of the program ranges from $2.85 million to $3.1 million a year. You'll... You might recall that in 2021 and 2022, we've reduced that levy amount to $2.2 million. Okay. Nope. There we go. So the other next option is extending that quarter percent sales tax, which we currently collect. The 2023 to 2027 program includes approximately $110 million in construction. Like previously, that sales tax revenues will pay, help pay for the engineering and those right-of-way costs for those sales tax-funded projects. County levy-funded portion of the program in those years ranges from $2.2 to $2.5 million. I tried to keep it at that range so as to not incur a huge levy increase because of the Highway Department's construction program. That additional funding accomplishes advancing at least one year over 43 miles of resurfacing and 3.2 miles of reconstruction. And then we add, over and above that base program, almost 27 miles of resurfacing, six and a half miles of reconstruction, and one major intersection improvement. So this is the full program map, and then that's the map showing only the added projects above and beyond that base program. So the next option is just increasing that sales tax to a half percent. The program would include approximately $140 million in construction. Sales tax revenues, again, pay for all those engineering and right-of-way costs. County levy-funded portion of the program, I kept it at that $2.25 to $2.5 million per year. We advance over 79 miles of resurfacing and over 16 and a half miles of reconstruction by at least a year. And then we add almost 72 miles of resurfacing, over 14 miles of reconstruction or new alignment, and two major intersection improvements, as well as a bridge replacement above and beyond that base program. I'm just going to point out, this is a very aggressive road program. We would be spending money on consulting engineers, and we would try to do that primarily on those sales tax-funded projects. So again, we have a map of the full program. You can see we're hitting a lot of roads, and then those are the added projects on that. So the next option is increasing to a half percent sales tax, but taking away that county levy-funded portion of the road program. Now, as you recall, I mentioned just a little bit ago that that's been about $2.2 million the last couple of years. I would propose, obviously contingent on board approval, that the Highway Department keep a million dollars of that, because our maintenance budget has not gone up significantly in the last seven years. We're trying to improve the service and do more, but we're doing that with the same amount of money and absorbing any wage increases, et cetera. So essentially, I'd be proposing to reduce the county levy by $1.2 million. That additional million would be used for things like contractor culvert replacements. We would incorporate permanently an epoxy striping contract to extend the life of those... The pavement markings, they would be ground-in, wet reflective, added engineering costs, et cetera. And again, that sales tax would be paying for the engineering right-of-way costs on those sales tax projects. This additional funding would advance over 79 miles of resurfacing and over 11 miles of reconstruction. We would add above the base program 57 miles of resurfacing, 13 and a half miles of reconstruction, and two major intersection improvements. So thank you, first of all, to Jeff Johnson and Jake from the Assessors Office for giving me this information, like they dropped everything to get it for me, because I know you're going to be curious how that impacts the levy. $1.2 million in the grand scheme of things. While that is over 15% decrease for the Highway Department's portion of the levy, it's about a 1.37% decrease in the overall levy. You can see what the impacts are to different types of property. So again, it's not a huge impact, but it does have an impact on all of those properties. So again, here is the overall map, and then the added projects. So I mentioned earlier, you do have some other options. Several counties have gone away from the resolution with the attached list of specific projects. They've basically included a map either of their five- or 10-year road program, or they've highlighted all roads that would need to be improved in some way, shape, or form, whether that's an overlay, a reconstruction, whatever the case is, sometime in the next five or 10 years. The benefit of including the entire road program would be that every time there is a change in funding or we add a project in, the county board would not need to hold a public hearing. Granted, that public hearing is held at a county board meeting, so I would leave that up to you as to if you think that is a problem for you. It would give us the option to do some funding shifts if we needed to do that. And again, that five years versus 10 years, we could include a map that shows all potential future projects, or we could extend that very specific road program to 10 years. That does get difficult, and schedules would probably change, but we could at least have a list of projects. One of the things that I've not discussed with you specifically, and I've not developed that program, is the wheelage tax. Currently, we collect $10. Do you want staff to put together a program that incorporates a lower sales tax amount or any of these sales tax amount with an increased wheelage tax? Would you prefer looking at eliminating that wheelage tax? Or the one option that I had with eliminating that levy portion of the construction program incorporates putting some of that money toward maintenance? The wheelage tax by statute can be used for any highway purpose, according to the Minnesota Constitution. So I know when we implemented the wheelage tax, the county board was very specific about using that money to improve our pavement preservation program. So we've tried to use that to do resurfacing projects. However, if there were an increase in the local option sales tax, we could eliminate that entire levy and shift that wheelage tax to maintenance. And these are just options I'm throwing out in the event you want programs like that developed. So...
Jody, just for clarification, the wheelage brings in about, what, 1.4?
1.35 million, 1.4 million, something like that. Again, the whole public input process was delayed because of COVID. So I've put together three virtual meeting options. Right now, I've got them set. I wanted to do them in late afternoon, early evening, and then I figured I would give a lunch hour option if somebody's eating lunch at their computer and wants to sit in on it. So right now, I have it set for March 8th at 5:00, March 15th at noon, and March 22nd at 5:00. I figured I would have three options, and then I could leave the presentation up on the website, a section of our, the Highway Department's website, or area of the website, excuse me. I'm finalizing dates for in-person public input. I would like to do the Belgrade area, Socks Center area, Richmond, Albany, and then the St. Cloud area, and I'd be looking at that 5:30 to 7:30 timeframe. And of course, if anybody reaches out, they can certainly give me comments directly, or I can set up meetings with them. So as part of this and from you, I'm seeking input on not only the funding options, but on the projects that I've included in those programs. I know I've gotten a few comments from people, even though we've not done the direct outreach yet. I would be giving a similar presentation to the general public, maybe a little bit more focus on some of the projects that are added, if they have any questions on those, and then that way they would have that opportunity to provide a little bit more input on those projects. So I know a few of you have asked me for what my recommendation would be, and I have some idea in my head, but I think I'd like to wait until after I hear that public input, and then I would probably give my recommendation at that point. There have been comments about perhaps this is worth a work session at some point, and maybe we can decide that based on a summary of the public input we receive, and once I distribute that to you. I know that some of you have asked for some additional information. We're putting all that together, and I will get that to those who asked... Excuse me, by the end of the week. So I also want to let you know that I'm going to update all of those programs to reflect some federal funding we recently received. We received a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant to put around about at County Road 2 in Minnesota Street on the west side of St. Joseph. I don't know how many of you recall when we built the St. Joseph bypass of County Road 2. We had some, well, quite a few crashes at that intersection. So we did secure some federal funding to put around about at that location. And we were also allocated about $2 million in federal money for that County Road 75 bridge that we were working with Congressman Emmer's office. We could still use that $1 million set aside to help offset some of those project costs, but I will be updating the program to reflect that, and I will get those distributed to you as well. So I don't know if any of you have any questions or comments on the approach we're taking or other potential programs you'd like to see.
Okay, thanks, Jody. Commissioner Persky?
Jody, on that million-dollar earmark, if we move forward with the project, will that, if that legislation proceeds, do we get reimbursed?
We would not be able to open bids or have that money authorized unless that earmark is in place.
Okay.
Commissioner Clark?
I just want to thank, again, you and I have had this conversation, your staff and Jeff Johnson, your staff for putting... I mean, these are complicated numbers in some ways, and you're presenting them in some ways that I think will be really helpful for the public, and it's going to be interesting to hear what they have to tell us. So I just mostly just wanted to say thank you. I know it was a lot of work.
Anyone else have comments for Jody? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Just the first decision from listening to this would seem to be, do we want to spend more on transportation? And if the answer is yes, then we can consider all these options. If the answer is no, then we're done. So do we want to do that? And I think we can decide yes or no. And then today, and then perhaps... What's the deadline for making a decision on, say, the five or 10-year or the rest of the possibilities? What do you think?
We would need to notify the Department of Revenue by October 1st if it is going to be extended. Right now, the Department of Revenue has it set to be cut off on December 31st.
Okay, so we got some time.
Yeah, so now it's just basically getting public input.
Right, this is just information only. We don't have to make any decisions.
Yeah, we want to do that.
Okay. Jody, anything else?
Just one miscellaneous item I wanted to... I don't know how many of you get the emails. The Transportation Alliance Transportation Day at the Capitol in St. Paul is set for March 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We've got some time to register, but if anybody is interested in going to that, let me know. I can accommodate or help with organizing the registration, and then we can coordinate driving down to St. Paul. And hopefully by then, we won't be dealing with weather like this, but I have a feeling we might be.
No, I'm kidding.
All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jody. All right, would you guys like to have a break first or run through Out of the Treasure?
I'd like a break.
Okay, we'll take our five-minute break.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve.
Oh, boy.
Close to the, as least amount of changes as possible, but it certainly is, many of the metros have seven. This map just illustrates where we are today. So it's the current map with the 2020 populations on it. So you can see from this that District Two has way too many people. And District One and Five are a little short. In the lower left-hand portion, there's a hard-to-read detail, but it goes through the variance of the percentages from the average. And you can see that one and Five are low and Two is high. So we're going to have to for sure make some adjustments in that map to shrink that accordingly.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
This is where I usually feel mini-compelled to say one of the challenges we obviously faced during pandemic was students were not around at St. Cloud State. So this doesn't necessarily mean that human beings, the numbers of human beings that might have been in the area will be in the area any other given year. It's just that day, for that time period, we had a number of people who unfortunately were not in our area. So we may have actually grown more than the census would have indicated, but it doesn't matter because that's who was here on those days.
Right. It's a snapshot. And of course, because it lasts for 10 years, the numbers were all, the plan we had last 10 years ago was very evenly balanced. There wasn't a lot of variance. And now you can see 10 years later, it's pretty far out of balance.
Right. Thank you.
This is what, we're going to talk just very briefly with the next couple of slides about how the new congressional and legislative districts will impact the county. So here's the new congressional. We've always been split between Six and Seven, but in the past, Six was a pretty straight line that ran from north to south. And, you know, it started where Crane and Holding Township was in the north and ran straight down. So the only existing part of that is where Collegeville kind of sticks out. And then that was where the line is, and it ran all the way down into Munson, which was split into two districts. They had to go to two precincts then. And because it ran a straight line until it got all the way down there, and then it zagged at the very bottom and split into two. We don't spend a lot of time on analyzing what was in the past. We're trying to spend our time looking forward. So I didn't do any great depths of detail analysis. But the state has the same issue that Stearns County has, all their populations on the east side. And so as a result, everybody who's on the west side has to come east to gain territory land. We're a microcosm of the state in that regard. This one has changed a fair amount. Again, the east side is pretty much the same. 13A was bigger in the past, and there was no 12A in Stearns County. 12A ran farther to the west, way out by Morris, for the most part. So in their wisdom, they seemed fit to draw that. But we've always had 14A and then 14B across the river for the most part. But there are some changes there. And then in the next one, the senate districts, which are just the total of all the 12s and the 13s and 14s that we just saw, are on there. 14 has an unfortunate thumb sticking out of it in the St. Joe area, which Roxanne can answer any questions on later. Any questions on that portion? Okay. And Roxanne's going to take over for the rest.
Okay. Morning, Roxanne.
Good morning. Okay, so as we move forward, as we prepare plans, there are some requirements that we'll need to follow. And I think we've talked a little bit about these in past presentations, but I'll go over them again. So we'll need to create election districts that are equal in population. We'll also need to create districts that are compact and contiguous. We also need to take into consideration that the district precinct lines, we have got the 10% rule. So the district populations cannot vary more than 10% from the average of all districts in the county unless the result forces a voting precinct to be split. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to advance. Our 5% rule, so the commissioner districts, if there's a change greater than 5%, then the commissioner will need to run for office. Now, back in 2012, when plans were brought to the county board, this is what we did in 2012, and this is what we're thinking about doing for this year unless you would like to see something different. But for example, we would have a spreadsheet that talked about the plan and then kind of different observations with that plan. And then we'd also list the population, the percent, the percentage of deviation from average, and then whether or not the commissioner would have to run this year or not. And then attached to that worksheet, we would also have maps, as an example. We would have, depending on the district, we would probably zoom in, you know, so you could see where the lines would be. But again, that kind of depends on the plan. But we would definitely have maps with it along with a spreadsheet that talked about the different observations of the plan. So what we're looking for today, first, if you have any questions, otherwise, the action we're looking for is to set a public hearing for Tuesday, April 12th. And with that public hearing, it'd be with the intent to consider plans for redistricting of county commissioner districts. Any questions for us?
Okay, if not, we'd be looking for that motion.
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Clark makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lenzmeyer. He's set the public hearing for April 12th on redistricting. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
I just have a question. Is there more information going to be presented tonight than was presented here? What do you?
Tonight's meeting is essentially a listening session. Public can come and offer what they would like to see or how they can submit plans or whatever. So we don't really have any more that we can, we'll go through some, basically, we'll give them some, yeah, 101 level stuff for people. And then, so it's a little longer presentation than what we're doing today.
Have you had any indication from the public as to interest, as to how many people will be there or anything like that? No? Okay, thank you.
And that starts at Six, correct?
At the West Service Center.
At the West Service Center. Thanks. Okay, Commissioner Persky.
Dave, I got a question. When you're talking about congressional districts and you look, the split in St. Wendell Township, they actually took a township with 2,000 people and split it up. What?
Years ago, we actually had Zion Township split.
But I would think, you know, trying to make that up within the entire six districts, they couldn't find a township other than St. Wendell.
Stearns is a popular county for splits.
Oh, okay.
We're in the center, and it seems like, if you look at our surrounding neighbors, there aren't many, but we always seem to have sometimes two or three or even four. I think after 2,000, we had four splits that were, and one ran along a ditch, and it was, we petition, we can petition to try to change some of those boundaries, but we've never had any success with it.
2010, Munson was split.
Yeah, it just seems so odd, yeah.
It's easier to get it down to one out here because we're, stuff's spread out more. That's my theory.
And so we're the lucky dog.
We always have been.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Next, looks like we have Mr. Johnson and crew. Morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Jeff Johnson, Property Services Director. And also present today will be Steve Holt House with the Audit and Treasurers Office. Randy wasn't able to be in attendance today, and so we're going to be addressing item F2 on packet pages 152 and 153. This is a request to approve the contract for new KAMA and tax software and services. Just to give you a little historical perspective, this has been almost five years in the works. Back in 2017, we had some initial discussions and meetings about moving on and looking at a new KAMA system that was to be supported by Avenue. At that time, it was Conduit. And that KAMA system was referred to as the legacy when they were moving to a new platform. And there were some difficulties that we had discussed and presented to you back in October of 2019. But anyway, these discussions had morphed and were more aligned with an integrated appraisal and tax software system that would provide a streamlined enterprise for Stearns County, something we haven't had. And so we participated in a number of meetings and discussions with other counties. We participated in demos, and that led to the release of Minnesota MCCC RFP in September 2019. And then one month later, I presented to the board action to be taken to end our participation with Avenue's KAMA project as well as the KAMA program. And you did approve that. And subsequently, we did receive an agreement that provided three years of support and maintenance on that legacy system up until the end of next year, December 31st of 2023. Steve has been a big part of the RFB process, and I'm going to pause here and let him speak to that process and the procedure that was undertaken because I think it's important to understand what those goals were and what we're getting in terms of the Tyler Technology product that's before you today. Steve?
Thank you, Jeff. Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I was involved with the MCCC RFP Committee. It was a lengthy process, took about, almost two years in order for us to get a contract finalized. We pushed it out nationally. We had hired a consultant. We had seven vendors respond. Four of those vendors had integrated systems. Three were kind of, had either a KAMA option only or just the tax option. The goal of the MCCC was to have the integration. For us, it's a big-time savings as far as not maintaining two systems during the time the board equalization is done. Those homesteads, I think we do about 3,000 homesteads a year that we're doing dual maintenance, syncing the systems. So we hope to have some savings there in the future just by having that integrated system. With the three vendors that had the integrated system, there was Avenue, which is still in development. There was also Mentum Technologies, which is our current tax vendor. They were, they did not have a KAMA system that was implemented in Minnesota. And there was also Tyler Technologies. Tax and KAMA have been implemented in Minnesota. And so we had narrowed down to meet with those three vendors as far as getting demonstrations and going through that process. Mentum Technologies was selected first, however, they came back with a higher quote than original, and they no longer could do KAMA. So we worked with Tyler Technologies, where we ended up today with a MCCC contract. And I think that's kind of the background with the MCCC process. But it was a two-year process where we looked at everything nationally that we could. Minnesota is up there as far as difficulty in real estate property tax calculations. I think we're just behind California a little bit, but, so there weren't, there's not a lot of options out there, which is kind of sad. But we then began to look at timelines. So one of the timelines is if we do the MCCC contract, you know, right now, they're implementing a number of counties. And so it kind of pushed us back because it's going to be a different process. And that's when we started looking at independent contract with Tyler Technologies as well. But maybe Jeff can speak to that a little bit more.
Thank you, Steve. As part of the MCCC RFP, once the contract was awarded to Tyler Technologies, counties were instructed, particularly interested ones, to work directly with Tyler and contract with them as part of the agreement. But since the process took considerable time and there were many challenges, as Steve had mentioned, several MCCC counties actually negotiated contracts with Tyler outside of the cooperative. And so in August of 2021, Stearns County decided to independently explore a contract with Tyler. And to make mention of that, Tyler is a state-recommended vendor that's part of the Sourcewell Cooperative Power Purchasing Program. And so, you know, that particular vendor does offer some discounted pricing through the state system. Anyway, our efforts led to some favorable terms that were extended to us as well as pricing with the option of joining the MCCC contract at a later time at an additional cost. And when we tried to press them on that point, that information wasn't available. It's to be determined, and it's based upon the difference in pricing based on per parcel versus population. But we do know that the quote that was given to us, that's presented in your packet today, is one that is very favorable to Stearns County and is the most attractive one that we can entertain at this time. This proposal, the contract language, was fully vetted with procurement, information services, as well as the county attorney's office over the last couple of months. And it has resulted in a contract ready for your approval today. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve, and you can talk about some of the specifics about the Tyler Technologies product.
When we had made that decision to maybe sign an independent contract, we asked, you know, we talked amongst ourselves, property service departments, Audit and Treasurer, you know, what are our goals? What are our long-term goals? Five, 10 years? What does the software look like? You know, what does the state look like? Some of the things that we came up with is, you know, we still want that integrated system, right? It prevents less chance for errors. We have labor savings on dual maintenance for the future, not to add FTEs. And just also the timeline, we also have a KAMA and tax software that our contract will be expiring in '24. So how do we get in line with the conversion? It's probably a year, year-and-a-half process just going through the conversion. The public access site, which will also come along with this contract that we're presenting, has a better-facing application that we can control. It is hosted. We'll also be able to provide e-notices through the system as well, where people can sign up through an online application, get those notices of correspondence, value notices, the tax statement, the TNT notice. We currently do that, however, it's kind of more of a manual process for us right now, so that would become more electronic. It also has a GIS interface, content management, where we can store correspondence that is set out on your parcel. And the future integration with the financial system. They have a product called Tyler Payments, and our current financial system is a Tyler product. So our ideas of to integrate the systems for vendors to pay online can be streamlined potentially in the future. Also, Tyler offers a recorded track index that could also be a future possibility as well. And the mobile assessment, also creating some efficiencies for the assessors in the field. Those are kind of the big benefits that we were looking for and that they provide for us as far as the software services. I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions about the software itself for me.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Historically, well, first of all, you folks have made this process sound easier than it actually is. How, with Stearns County going with the new contract, how does that impact overlapping Are, what makes just this whole process an adventure is overlapping districts. We have numerous school districts in Stearns County, in addition to the county, in addition to the cities and with our major city in parts of three counties. Going with the new software, are all of our adjacent jurisdictions, and this would be counties in this example that I'm thinking of, is that a united effort? That they're going with that same system? Or are, does this system for a county that might not be adopting this, does this interface with the old system? It's underappreciated how this can be an adventure with those overlapping districts. How do you take that into account?
Drawing straws here, huh?
I can honestly say I wasn't prepared for that question. But let me speak to this point along those same lines. MCCC, back around, what was, 2012, we had as many as 34 counties that were participating in the KAMA USA program, okay? As of October of last year, that number has dwindled to 18. Many of them have gone on and secured contracts independently with Tyler Technologies. Today, there are 19 Minnesota counties that are Tyler Technology counties, some of which are fully integrated with both the KAMA and the tax and billing collection modules, okay? They have a tax user group that meets about five to six times a year, and they are growing, and they have a lot of support and technology-driven initiatives through that organization. We like to think that we could be part of that because many of these counties are much larger than Stearns County. And to that point, Tyler Technologies meets and exceeds the support across the state by providing online services and way of documentation and training. They work very closely with the Minnesota Department of Revenue and provide regular updates to those counties. Just speaking briefly about those 19 counties, some that come to mind that we've had some conversations with that are very supportive. In fact, during July of 2021, Steve was able to coordinate a full-day meeting with Scott County, which we all participated in, to understand the Tyler Technology and the conversion issues. And we felt their support was priceless. But Scott County was one that we recognized. There's Anoka, Beltrami, Crow Wing, Blue Earth, Dakota. These are many counties that we would reap the benefits of our association with them across county lines just because of their understanding of the system and their regular meetings. And I've seen the agendas and the information that's been exchanged, and I've, again, I've found that to be very, very valuable. So we think that an integrated system, one that allows us to manage both the taxation piece and the appraisal piece in a seamless world, is the best for Stearns County because it provides a lot of opportunities for managing the assessment all the way through the collection process. And so where we had these gaps and a lot of extra work putting into building programs and doing edits to make sure that the data was correct and complete, and we're producing the best possible assessment and tax rules, this just integrates and flows through these workflows, and it saves time and money and resources. So we think it's a good move, and we encourage and urge you to, you know, pass this request to adopt this new Tyler Technologies KAMA and tax software and services that are available to us.
What makes, for the edification of my esteemed colleagues, what makes this an adventure is that not all jurisdictions, in terms of moving on to new systems, move at the same speed. What's, this is a good idea, and it's worth doing. But what makes it a bigger adventure is that while we're coming on with a new system, the added cost, part of the added cost of the new system is that it still has to be able to communicate with the old system. And some jurisdictions are in a, you just heard the varying numbers of jurisdictions that are part of this and aren't part of this more significantly. But an added cost is that, yep, we can go with the latest, greatest, and we will. But it's, where it gets spending is that it still has to communicate with what was in place, and that makes it harder. There are jurisdictions that don't place a priority on this or don't appreciate the adventure this is in an operational sense. So it does create problems. And I, you know, I support going with this new system, but it isn't a one-size-fits-all situation. So does this new system talk to the old system? I mean, how do you, how do you guys do that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I'll speak to it, and then I'll turn it over to Steve, talking about conversion. But one of the important parts is the planning that goes into making the conversion and migrating from the old system to the new platform. And Tyler Technologies, as well as Stearns County, will have what's called an executive sponsor. We will also have project managers, both on their side as well as our own. We've already briefly talked about how we would attempt to address that. We have a person in the assessor's office as well as the Audit and Treasurers Office that will act as dual project managers. And then we'll have a steering committee that will assist us with the day-to-day decisions that have to be made. But we will be moving from, with your approval, of course, an old legacy platform to a new platform that will take a lot of planning and a lot of conversion. And there are some hidden costs with that, you know, we make no bones about that. That's one of the things that we've been looking at in developing some contingency plans, and we'll be talking later in the week with your, if this is approved, to start working on some of those plans that we would need to put into place as far as, okay, where's funding coming from? And one of the most important pieces to this is, you know, what monies we've set aside in the technology fund to assist us in this particular area to migrate from the old legacy system onto the new platform. I'll let Steve just speak very briefly about conversion and what's involved with that because both Steve and I have been involved with the tax conversion. And I was involved in '92 with the conversion from the old BRC program to the KAMA. It was actually called KAMA, and then KAMA is USA. So there's a lot of work that's involved with that. And, you know, knowing that we have this understanding and wherewithal to start, you know, doing some productive planning, that's going to be integral to, you know, the success in moving from an old system to new. But Steve, go ahead and talk briefly about conversion.
Yeah, the conversion is always a challenge. Our last conversion, just like Jeff spoke to, was in 2009 when we went live with Mentum Technology software for tax. And you have to muddle your way through that first year. I've already reached out to Ramsey County. Ramsey County is in the process of converting as well, and they're on our tax software that we currently have. So they are ready to provide us their scripts in order to extract the data to get that conversion to work. I think it's probably a 90%. We may have to do some data cleansing, which is what our expectation is, and we'll be able to manipulate the scripts as well to get our best-sued data into the Tyler Technologies to get past that first year. As far as the KAMA side, two years ago, I believe, they had worked with Avenue, getting an extract. So that is a standard extract tool that is available to the counties for the KAMA software that I believe there is, two just went live with that. Beltrami and Hubbard might have gone live in the last several months here using that extract. I don't think it's perfect for us, and I think there'll be some more conversion issues on the commercial side, if anything, because of the data tables that get used. I know Scott County spoke to us about that. They had made that decision just to move forward by entering those, that data, just because it did not convert, and the calculation methods are a little bit different, I believe. because it did not convert and the calculation methods are a little bit different, I believe. So, I mean, we've already thought about it. We've, we've reached out to our network, you know, our peers and we're looking down that road. And I think, speaking with Tyler Technologies, we'll be looking at beginning in the process this year, third or fourth quarter, just because of the other projects they have going right now.
Yeah, without extending this, what sounds like a lot of folks, like a really geeky discussion, because it is, to the point of curing insomnia, the, the point is different, different states of analysts, different. I haven't worked in Wisconsin for a long time, but I do know at one point they had a state administered system. And so when a change like this would only take place in their equivalent of a department of revenue. So it's not appreciated, but there's a massive amount of effort that goes into this. And you heard with their opening statement that, well, we've been working on this for two years or five years or whatever. And it's the overlapping districts really that are the adventure. What's that mean? It means that if you've got, let's say you're a farmer and yet your property straddles Stearns County and let's say Todd County, and not only that, it also straddles two school districts. And yet somehow you have to, to the extent possible, equalize that treatment. Well, that will drive you to distraction, but these folks are making it sound pretty easy. The, it's, it's not quite like that. And if you think that going with this new system makes future transitions maybe even easier, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna obviously support it anyway. But Jeff, you're the veteran of this pair. Is this getting to be a more straightforward process or is it just as damn goofy as it ever was?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Linsmeyer, I think, I think this is a big step forward in taking down some of those departmental data silos. And this might be the beginning of more of which could follow. This particular system does integrate with other categories of government software. And so maybe it opens the doors for other things because Tyler Technologies has the New World System, which this will be able to integrate with, that Stephen mentioned earlier. There are other, you know, software programs and services that are available too, that if and when other departments are looking at changing their platforms and making them more updated and current, this is a viable option. So.
Mr. Linsmeyer, was that a motion before to?
Yeah.
Approve the software agreement? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Clark, any further discussion? Any further discussion? I can kind of hear the horses out grazing in the pasture. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks for your efforts, gentlemen.
Yeah.
All right, well, we had our break unless we need another one. But do we need, Commissioner Clark, is that a yes?
Oh, that was just the, I obviously got caught up in chatting during the break instead of doing what I should have done.
Okay, why don't we just take a five minute break real quick before we get to administration? Thanks.
And next up is administration, and I don't know, Mike, if you want to start it off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't, I think our HRA Director Neil is going to handle this pretty well. But the topic here, and we've talked about it a couple of times since we had CARES funding and ARPA funding, and the Housing Trust Fund is a method that could be used to incent private developers to create affordable housing. And so what that would take, of course, is dollars, but also the county to do an ordinance that would allow that and guide that. And our concept was then that the HRA Board, or HRA, would administer the program. But Neil and Elizabeth both have much more knowledge about a Housing Trust Fund than I do, so take it away.
Thank you.
Morning Neil. Is Elizabeth on? Do we know?
I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Morning.
Neil Fortier, Executive Director, Stearns County HRA. Mike and I are still working on the details as to who will administer the program, but I think that was a strong hint right there. But online, I do have Elizabeth Glidden. She is the Deputy Executive Director of Minnesota Housing Partnership. And she by far is the most knowledgeable about Housing Trust Funds. So I am going to turn it over to her immediately. She will be available for questions, and I will be available for questions after her presentation. So with that, Elizabeth, the show is yours.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm with the Minnesota Housing Partnership. I just want to say I had hoped to be there in person, but I got a little snow scared, so apologies for that. So thanks for the help with the presentation. Minnesota Housing Partnership, we are a 30-plus-year nonprofit organization that works in three areas. We work on policy and advocacy. We produce original research that is based on Minnesota. And we also provide community development assistance focused on serving rural and native rural communities and native nations. We can probably move forward to Slide 6 pretty quickly. These are just a couple of maps showing where we work around the state of Minnesota. Keep moving forward one more perhaps. And so just wanted to give kind of a simple outline of what I'm hoping to provide to you today with some information about local Housing Trust Funds. We'll focus most of our time on a little bit more of this kind of why a local Housing Trust Fund, some of the benefits, some of the mechanics of that. Really light touch on establishing a local Housing Trust Fund. We will also touch briefly on the state legislature recently approved a state match program for local Housing Trust Funds, and then I have some examples to share with you. Next slide. So first, just focusing on this kind of what it is. The local Housing Trust Fund must be established by an elected government body. As was mentioned in the overview, state law now asks that an ordinance be approved to establish the fund. And the fund will dedicate public revenues to housing needs. So it's sort of like establishing a piggy bank of a sense to ensure that funds can remain dedicated to housing. Next slide. MHP has been working on Housing Trust Funds for some number of years. In 2017, we first went to the legislature asking that the state legislature step in and clarify local Housing Trust Funds, which they did in state law. It's really a permissive state law because there are other types of funds that you can set up that are similar to this, but if you want it to be a local Housing Trust Fund and thus qualified for the state match program, this provides some clarity on what is required. Next step. Often when establishing a local Housing Trust Fund, a community goes through some kind of process which can be unique to each community to determine why housing may be important and why a local Housing Trust Fund may be the mechanism that can be helpful. Performing market studies, doing planning, and utilizing community sourced information are all typical things that are done to establish this baseline of information. Next step. So we're going to spend just a little bit of time talking about, again, why a local Housing Trust Fund. Next slide. The first is, these are dedicated funds. So again, knowing that your funds, there's a lot of pressure, of course, on local government, lots of funding needs, so knowing that there is a place where there is funding that is dedicated to those housing purposes can be extremely helpful. While we recommend looking for a recurring source, many communities also use one-time sources. This next slide, this predictability, what's hidden underneath the graphic there is, it says it allows for long-term planning for municipalities and developers. This is important because housing, especially housing development, often is a multiple-year process, taking quite some time. So knowing, again, there's some predictability to funding can be important as you're trying to attract private investment. Next step. Leverage, there's been a lot of work done nationally on identifying how local Housing Trust Funds can leverage more money into your community. This is a national figure, one for every dollar that you may leverage, six. And that number can vary a little bit based on communities. As we find out more about Minnesota, we can find out what might be a Minnesota leverage, but I think that this is pretty typical and not out of bounds. Next slide. Flexibility is actually often the most cited reason that is a benefit to a local Housing Trust Fund. With the local Housing Trust Fund, really a local community, a city or a county or even a state is really taking matters into your own hands in terms of being able to establish your priorities. You are able to provide some creativity in how programs are established, ensuring that they meet your needs, that you're not boxed into other requirements. They also can be leveraged on top of other programs, perhaps by the state or the federal government, so that you are getting more benefit out of your dollars. Next slide. And finally, establishing a local Housing Trust Fund really can be a tremendous signal, both internally as well as externally, that housing is a priority and that you're very serious about this being something that local government should play some role in. Next step. So MHP actually got involved in working on local Housing Trust Funds by our direct technical assistants that we provide in communities. We had worked with the Executive Director at Red Wings HRA. And this was his quote, "local control for a local issue." Excuse my cough here. And...
Did we lose you?
No.
No?
She's probably taking a drink, coughing.
I apologize. I was coughing a little bit there and then thought I would put it on mute.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So we can move on to the next slide. Local Housing Trust Funds are common across the United States. And this map kind of shows that they really are almost ubiquitous across the nation. Next step. Minnesota Housing Partnership, we do a lot of work in rural communities. So this is something important to us to understand that they are something that is helpful in rural areas. And our neighbor to the south has established local Housing Trust Funds for quite some time. They have a special match program from the state that provides this extensive coverage. Next slide. Last year, after a few years of effort to establish a state match, the legislature did approve a state match fund at the $1 million level. This state match will provide a one-to-one match for a community that has a local Housing Trust Fund with what the words in the statute are new public revenue, up to $150,000. And if funds remain available, that there can be a, you know, 50% on the dollar, up to $300,000. We have not yet seen the application procedure announced, but anticipate that will come in late spring or perhaps early summer. So Minnesota Housing Partnership has spent quite some time working on a number of supports for local communities. One is our Local Housing Trust Fund Manual, which was designed to be specific to the state of Minnesota. This is just a little peek. We're not going to go into these topics, but this is just an example of how we help communities work through sort of a how-to, step-by-step, in looking at all the things that they might want to think of considerations as they are establishing a local Housing Trust Fund. Next slide. We also have been doing quite a bit of work supporting local communities, consulting, and sometimes providing direct technical assistance, as well as doing some survey work to understand what is happening with local Housing Trust Funds in Minnesota. In 2017, this was prior to when the state passed this law that clarified, what do you need to do to establish a local Housing Trust Fund? We had three communities with local Housing Trust Funds. And as you can see, quite a number of communities since then have now established. And so these would be communities now that have adopted an ordinance, gone through that significant process. And we have a growing number of communities that are indicating that they have interest in establishing. In the little green pullout, this is just a short list of communities that I have been aware of that are on those steps to establishing an ordinance, so they're kind of taking those significant steps. We also have seen the number of counties with local Housing Trust Funds grow. I think we have seven counties today that already have adopted local Housing Trust Funds, ranging from counties, you know, Hennepin County, the most populous county in the state, to smaller counties such as Swift. And as you can see on this shortlist, we have a number of counties that are actively considering adopting an ordinance. Next slide. Some of the other work that we have done is to survey communities on how did they fund their local Housing Trust Funds? And we have some other publications that provide some more detailed descriptions of these sources. These are really some of the most popular sources that have been utilized in local Housing Trust Funds in Minnesota, but what we really see is a high amount of creativity. By far, I would say the HRA levy and then TIF pooling are the most popularly-used fund sources for local Housing Trust Funds in Minnesota. Next slide. We also have done some work looking at what are the common programs that are established? So this is just a list that shows what are some of those most common programs that local Housing Trust Funds are funding. And I would say too, just another item of note, is that most local Housing Trust Funds often focused on one to two, perhaps three, programs. And it's interesting, that seems to be regardless of size of local Housing Trust Fund. Next slide. So just wanted to showcase briefly a few examples of local Housing Trust Funds. As I mentioned earlier, we had worked with Red Wing. Some years ago, they are what I would call an early adopter of local Housing Trust Funds. They have really used their local Housing Trust Fund to leverage development in a significant way. They have also established a homeownership program. And they have worked very hard to... The HRA is the administrator of that fund, and it has worked extremely closely with the city to identify partnership opportunities. For example, mixed-use projects where the city might fund the commercial portion, and the local Housing Trust Fund was utilized to fund a housing portion of a project. So I thought that was kind of an interesting example of how they've continued to look for these leverage opportunities. Next slide. The city of Rochester is interesting. They actually do not have a formal local Housing Trust Fund in that they don't have an ordinance that was adopted by the city or by the county, which works very closely with the city, on what they call their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In part, this is because the trust fund was started due to a partnership they had with the Mayo Foundation, the Rochester Foundation, excuse me. And so that has been the administrator of their local Housing Trust Fund, which receives contributions from both the city of Rochester as well as the county. And they also have focused their Housing Trust Fund on development projects, on incentivizing development projects. And most significantly, they have utilized their local Housing Trust Fund to deepen affordability. So they have looked for where there are projects that already have some public component and looked for opportunities where a contribution from the local Housing Trust Fund would allow at least some of those units to be available to lower-income residents that need housing in the community. And last example was Swift County. Swift County, this also is a county that we have worked very closely with on their local Housing Trust Fund. They had participated in MHP's Housing Institute, which is one of the programs we run that provides sort of a collaborative learning environment for communities on housing projects. And Swift County established their local Housing Trust Fund really around a very specific housing objective. They had a property in the county. It was a larger rental property compared to other rental properties in the county that is funded by USDA. It's a rural development property. And the property was owned by a group that wanted to exit ownership. And so the county saw this as an opportunity, both to... They decided to step in because this is a property that provided important, very affordable housing for residents in the community. And they wanted to step in and offer to purchase that property. And they utilized that opportunity to establish a local Housing Trust Fund at the same time. Their design is that the primary proceeds into the local Housing Trust Fund go to pay off the mortgage on this particular rental property. And they hope to use any additional proceeds to assist with rental rehab projects. And with that, the next slide is just showing some resources that might be useful to you. And with that, I am done with my presentation, but available for questions.
All right. Thanks, Elizabeth. Anybody have a question for Elizabeth at this time? Or is Neil, you want to maybe?
So over the, I've been with the HRA now before years in June, and I receive calls from communities several times a year. Melrose, Belgrade, Albany, Cold Spring. And they're asking for assistance to assist a developer in developing affordable housing. And the cities can come to the table with smaller amounts of money. They can waive sack-and-wack fees or reduce building permit fees, but they just don't have the wherewithal to cover the gap that a developer may have in developing affordable housing in their particular community. So now, you know, let's take Melrose for an example. They've identified land that they can develop affordable housing on, but the gap that remains between what the developer can get through low-income housing tax credits and what is needed to build a project, there's a small gap that needs to be filled. And the city doesn't have the wherewithal to fill that gap. So now the Housing Trust Fund would come into play. And this would give Stearns County the tool to step up and say to developers, "We support affordable housing. We can assist in this manner." In this particular case, it would be a multifamily project in the city of Melrose. And we can cover that gap. And the ordinance that the county would pass would determine how we can assist that developer. And that's just one of the programs that could be offered through the Housing Trust Program. Dr. Williams has talked about initially funding this with $1 million, which would probably get us through two years, maybe three years worth of assisting developers in developing housing. Or let's say we have a single-family rehab program for low-income individuals. We could provide low-interest or no-interest loans to these single-family homeowners, and that debt could be structured so they wouldn't pay us back until they sold the home. There's so many options available to the county as to how the Housing Trust Fund can be set up to assist your constituents, the population of Stearns County. And Elizabeth, am I missing anything there?
No, that sounds like a very good overview.
So Neil and Elizabeth, would this, part of this money be like almost a revolving loan fund too? I mean, where it would get put out and come back in, could go back out again?
That would be established in the ordinance, and that is one of the options that are available to us. Or is it a developer comes to us and says, "We're going to develop 44 affordable housing units in Melrose, and we have a gap of $200,000." The ordinance could state that we could fund that gap, but they're going to have to keep those units affordable for a period of time and a certain percentage of area median income. So the county could say, "We'll cover that gap, and it won't be repayable, but you're going to have to keep them affordable for a period of 20 years minimum. And it's going to have to be affordable to individuals at 30% of area median income or less."
Any other, Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Neil and Elizabeth, you're still on with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Say, by all means, I embrace affordable housing, and I like to see it done on a local level. But we, last week when we were in DC, we were talking with Senator Smith about affordable housing. And she was talking about the trend we have with large corporations buying up lower-income type of housing. What they do is then, of course, they buy that up and then, of course, continue to squeeze with rate increases over the years. My fear, and I would very much support on a local level of us developing this, but what I would fear too is that, again, this would then perhaps have the potential for corporate just to gouge in the pricing. So can we have some type of safeguards for that?
So a LURA, a Land Use Restrictive Agreement, would be filed against that property as part of the conditions of the Housing Trust Fund. And that LURA stays with the land, okay? So whoever buys that property are going to still have to follow the rules of the ordinance. And more than likely, Minnesota Housing is going to have some financing in this deal. And today, if you do a Minnesota Housing Finance deal, the minimum affordability period is 40 years, and the developer can opt for 50 or 60 years, even more. But that is then recorded against the land, and there's rent restrictions, no more than 5% a year. And they must remain affordable for a period of 40 years. So all those restrictions are tied to the land and recorded against the land. So no matter who purchases it, because you're right, Commissioner Persky, and we see it every single day, we've lost so, we've lost hundreds of units in the last two years because of IREITs purchasing properties in Stearns County, and then no longer accepting Section 8, and then now they're jacking the rents to above fair market rents. So now they can't, they won't even accept a Section 8 voucher. So what this program would allow us to do is put those restrictions in place so entities, corporations, wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I, you know, I have no problem with somebody making a profit, but I do have a problem with price gouging on low, folks that are at the lower income level. And Elizabeth, while you're on here, do we have the same situation with mobile homes? Because in particular, in my district, we've had corporate buy a mobile home park and have done basically the same, nearly doubling the price of rent in five years. And mobile homes are, you know, an affordable, or were an affordable, type of housing and are becoming less that way. Just to put that on your radar, that's a concerning issue.
I wanted to just make one addition. I think these are great examples of how the local Housing Trust Fund could be helpful in your community. And just one other note, in addition to what Neil described about the LURA and how that could be applied, is that with a local Housing Trust Fund, you will have more flexibility to address needs as they are arising in your community. So I think that's part of what Senator Smith is identifying, is that, you know, there is something that is a developing trend. And they are looking at, you know, how do we develop appropriate solutions to address concerns about price gouging or other kinds of trends? And a local Housing Trust Fund will allow a community to often move more quickly to address those community concerns than would happen with, of course, a state or a federal program.
All right. Any other comments, Commissioner Mergon?
There was one slide that went over rather quickly, listed ways to fund this other than property tax increases.
Let's see if I can do this faster.
I think it had TIF on, there you go. I think you just passed, you passed it right there.
So yeah, I mean, the most popular, obviously, is the HRA levy and the TIF pooling. And then we, the one-time resources that Dr. Williams is proposing to use, these are all options available to the county in order to fund the Housing Trust Fund. And then we have the state match, as Elizabeth spoke to. And we should, like she had mentioned, see an application. So timing, our timing couldn't be better if we were to move forward with this because we would have an opportunity, because it is new money, to get some of the state's funds to match the funds that we put into the Housing Trust Fund.
Parking funds, what would that be?
That's new to me, Elizabeth, so I'm going to leave that to you.
Right. So this is just, again, it's an example from another, actually, I think about three communities identified to me that they use parking funds. So if you charge for parking, and as an example, that might otherwise go into your general fund, you could designate a portion of that. I think the thing that's just key here is it's really any legally available source to you. Sometimes there can be sources that have restrictions on them. So that is maybe the one caution I would have, certainly with the TIF pooling, looking carefully at that. Other, on the repurposed funds, I think an example was given earlier of CARES dollars, ARPA dollars, or even CDBG. So those are funds that do have some restrictions on how they can be used for housing, but they can be used for housing. And so... And so just a note, what goes into your fund still follows those other restrictions.
Commissioner Clark?
Really appreciate you all bringing this forward. It is a really good tool if we figure out how to best use it, and especially with leveraging dollars, whether it's some of those federal ones, or perhaps, given our philanthropic communities, some additional resources there. I also was wondering if either of you might, you might not be in a place yet to talk about this, because I know you're still kind of working through this, but what other jurisdictions, regionally, might we be able to either pool dollars? Kind of thinking about our next conversation that has to do with broadband. And then, you know, kind of thoughts on how we make sure that this was something that was available through the whole county?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I think one of the things that I caught on, and, you know, this information really came from Neil, is that St. Cloud is at least talking about this, and that HRA, and it's certainly someone that we should be talking with, just to see where they're going, if there's some way we could partner with them. There's not, I don't know, there's another HRA in the county, does Melrose have an HRA or?
No.
No, EDA, they have an EDA.
EDA.
Okay. But if there is another one, and I can't think of one, that, you know, we certainly should be visiting with, with them. Certainly, some communities that have HRAs, but we should be seeing what's going on around us as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Neil and Lee, you might be able to comment about this. You know, this is desirable, we want to do something like this. Will the developers in the area embrace it? Are they embracing it? I mean, because the profit margins are not that great. Is that going to happen or not?
So I've had three developers reach out to me thus far, asking if the HRA would take the lead in creating the Housing Trust Fund, so there'd be some other resource available to them to close this gap. The Belgrade EDA, he calls me once a quarter, you know, what tools do you have for me to assist the developer? He says, I've got this huge residential piece of land that, you know, the city is willing to do all the infrastructure in, but beyond that, they don't have the means to assist the developer to get it to the next level. So, you know, developer after developer walks away because there's that gap, and the city doesn't have the means to fill it.
Yeah, we could use it in that area.
SOC Center, another one. I just, you know, was talking with the city administrator last week, and the city has taken upon themselves to develop commercial and residential lots, but they're only going to have so much funding available. So she's asking, well, what can you do to assist us? What can the county do to assist us? And that's what I told her, I had this meeting this week, and we were starting the process.
And I would think maybe Melrose with Jenny O could perhaps do the same thing.
Yeah. Jenny O, Land O' Lakes, they're all at the table. They were at the housing meeting that we had last quarter of 2021. And so all the large employers in Melrose are there at the table saying, what can you guys do for us?
So at this point, was this just a discussion area, or do we need to?
Mr. Chair, there's really, really no action, but I think that, you know, if there's interest in us coming back with a skeleton of what this might look like, I think would be the next step. I don't think we'd point where we'd bring a full-fledged ordinance, I mean, but something close so that you can see what the options would be.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for consensus, I, you know, to have administration go ahead. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Well, these, earlier in my career, I did a fair amount of appraisal work for Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, and got more than familiar with somewhat similar programs. So there's aspects of this that are new, but not very much. What is killing housing in any market is a crazy quilt of regulations that offer higher costs and higher development costs and less housing product. What this is, is, in my opinion, is a Band-Aid on a Band-Aid on a body cast. Every time we get an opportunity to take a look, not so much on the county level, but on municipal level, for example, building codes, well, this will make the properties safer. Well, it also raises costs. The amazing thing about these types of programs is the incredible growth in soft costs to meet all of the requirements to do this stuff. And you want to hew and cry over the conversion of low-income housing to market rate. Here's what happens. You get a group of investors, you sell them on a program like this, this is what in the housing market should be accurately referred to as limited dividend investment. It means you can only make so much money. Well, investors at that particular period in their careers, it makes, it looks pretty good. Well, developers get old, and at some point, they want to sell out of these things, and they're restricted from doing that. So their only option, if the agreement, development agreement allows them to, is to buy their way out. And that's, that's what happens. Even something as basic as building codes, updates on building codes are always sold as an addition, additional safety factor for the residents. What's conveniently ignored is building codes are not a new deal anymore. They've been added on and added on and added on, and every time you do that, you add cost. The multiple levels of government programs have one thing in common, and it continues to add cost. The category here is limited dividend structures combined with environmental rules, plus who's in charge. What happens at the agencies is, gosh, you know, the people that work at the agencies, they get old too. And the next group that comes in that's in charge has a different interpret of the interpretation of the regulations in place. This sounds good, as long as the presentation isn't too long. This isn't nearly as helpful as we so desperately want to believe. And yet, you know, I've got a campaign too, and the, when you get out on the trail, if people came in the middle of the second act of this three-act play, it sounds like you're against that. Well, I am in this structure, and this structure doesn't change. There are multiple levels of government that get involved in this now, and there's never really ever a new way to address this, except going for an additional overriding program. You guys can pursue this, and I won't get in the way, but it doesn't accomplish, in the long run, what you think it does. So good luck. The adventure continues. It goes where it goes. I would much rather see, look, our small cities are much more sophisticated organizations than they were even, say, 10 and 20 years ago. They can do more of this on their own. Some of the cities have more of the capacity to do it than they're letting on. I don't know if we're the entity to do this. It'll happen, because somebody will see the bait, go by, and bite at it, you know? Otherwise, there'd be no sport like fishing. And this isn't quite the end-all, be-all we so desperately wish to believe. I guess there's more steps involved, and, but the points, I won't say them, you know, I won't butcher through this again, but that's long-term, that's what we create. And when it comes time to fix it, we'll all be gone, so it won't be a problem.
But I think too, a lot of it, I think most of the communities probably have the wherewithal, but I don't think they have enough staff and the in-depth knowledge to probably put it together on their own. You know, so they obviously look for somebody, and to your point, Lee, this is, in my opinion, so typical of typical government, because you have all these agencies doing, trying to do something, and they all have administrative costs, you know? So by the time the money gets where it needs to go, you know, you hear this a lot on fundraising campaigns, because there's only a fraction of it actually hits the mark where it needs to. You know, but again, this is an effort, I mean, I know I've talked to the city of Melrose, you know, this gap, filling this gap, I mean, you have two big industries in town, and there is nobody that will come in because they know the profit potential.
What scares the developers in a market like Melrose is, is they don't want to buy the pitch of the Chamber of Commerce or the tremendous growth potential of the community. And so they, to take a position that's big enough to at least develop a slice of profit for them, they can't spread that over enough units. There is private capital available for a reasonable capital structure, but if they get caught up in all of these soft costs, that's what drives it away. We're our own worst enemies in trying to do this stuff. And I wish I had better news, but, you know, there's people out there making a career out of these Band-Aid programs, and good for them. But I really don't have a solution for this. But it's frustrating to sit on a panel like this and look like the Grinch that is wiping on Christmas. Fortunately, we have a number of cultural groups that have beaten me to that.
Commissioner Clark?
Rightfully so.
Commissioner Clark, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just saying, Lee, as usual, you bring up a lot of good points. I would say, having had a fair amount of experience with these too, is that there are some really good success stories, and they are less governments, really, in many ways. The question really is going to end up being how it's set up, where are the resources coming from, how are we leveraging? And I do really appreciate your bringing up that some of our local communities have some resources that may not have been brought to bear. I also agree with what you just said, Commissioner Notch, with regard to, some of the communities just don't have the expertise or the bandwidth. And so as we look for ways to remove challenges to dealing with some of these situations, there is some ways we can make a difference. This is one of those. Whether or not we end up doing it, that's a different question. But we do have so, oftentimes, just so much competition that's going, and then people not being, including developers, it's not really their job to really try to figure out where's the gap and what can we do about it. This is one of those ways. But the less we can make it be yet another, quote-unquote governmental program, yeah, let's not do that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, just to reiterate, the cities are coming to the county, asking us to assist them. If they had the wherewithal, they would do it, but they don't. And so they've come to us and said, you know, we need assistance in developing housing in our community. And so this is one of those options that are available to us, and the Housing Trust Fund gives us local control as compared to Minnesota housing, as compared to the federal government and the low-income housing tax credits. I mean, those are all options available to developers, and they'll use them. But now we would have local control.
They don't have the market size to spread all of those cost units over enough units to make sense. So they're intuitively, they realize that if they can't articulate that, but that's a challenge for development in smaller markets, and it's always going to be there. Gosh, you know, I mean, we, we're, that is inappropriate.
All right.
But that's the challenge.
Okay, well, I guess, I think.
But I'll, you know, let this keep, continue. Maybe, maybe the pencils will get sharper, you know? The hope for doing this more successfully is the continued growth of private consultants that do understand this stuff. And that way, the small cities that he's trying to be the hero for, the, they can use those types of people that understand the programming. I don't know if such a thing exists, because there's so many, but that would be the way to do that in the future. They're out there. It's a tremendous market, that'll take a while for the consultants to develop. Gosh, if they get a regional reputation for this, there's a lot of business out there for it. I'm too damn old.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, that's where I, Minnesota Housing Partnership, you know, they're the ones that would walk us through this whole program and help us establish it. And that's, you know, that's why I brought on Elizabeth Glidden, because they are the state's experts when it comes to the Housing Trust Funds.
Okay, all right.
Uncle.
Okay. All right, well, thanks, Elizabeth and Neil, for.
Thank you.
The presentation, and we'll see where it goes going forward.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up, Mike, I believe you have some Internet service provider information?
I do, and we'll get the PowerPoint up here, and I'm certainly not going to get you back on schedule here, so. And I don't know.
Well, we can be off one, one meeting a year.
This is a model that can work, so it's worth paying.
I don't know if Diane Cruz is with us or not, but.
I am. Hi, Michael. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Diane. Diane has been, Diane is with Neil Connect, who, as you know, has provided us some expertise as we've gone through this process, and did our initial, our initial study. And so she's joined us here, and she's been helpful in this process. We want to, I want to take you through the proposals that we received, and talk a little bit about our current status, because, because there's, there's a lot of issues and plans currently by the Internet service providers that we want to be knowledgeable about before we make any big decisions here. And then we're going to talk about some of the recommendations. At least at this point, we need, I mean, I'm not looking for any final approvals or any action by the board, but kind of a head nod, can we move ahead with, with this sort of, as we're looking at it? And so this map shows you the unserved and underserved, the two of blue, I think they're blue, I'm colorblind, but, and so you can see in the, yeah, so you can see areas like this are currently well-served, and that, that is areas that are actually probably pretty much Albany and Arvick are serving these areas. And down in this area, we have pretty good service. And then all of, all of this area is what we were concentrating on, trying to get better broadband service to. And so what we did with this request for proposals is we divided the county into five sections, and we call that the Northwest, the Southwest, the South, the Southeast, and the Northeast. And so we asked, we asked. And so we asked, we asked Internet service providers to give us proposals to cover those whole areas with good service, preferably fiber to the premise. And if they couldn't cover the whole area, we wanted to know what it would cost to cover the whole area in the future. So, and as you know, then we offered, we said we would spend up to $16 million in incentivizing those areas to be served. We did receive.
Mike, could you go back one slide and just explain? I know you've told me already, but the Albany area, how that's not in one of the, and why it's not in one of the sections there? It comes from?
This whole area is already served.
Okay.
So there's no unserved and underserved premises within that area because they're serving fiber to the premise today.
Just for clarification.
Yep. So we received, we received four, what I would call, you know, proposals that really proposed to cover kind of broad areas of the county, and then we received a couple of others that were very smaller areas of the county. So I want to focus first of all on those first four proposals. And so Albany Telephone, who already covers a number of this area here with fiber, made a proposal to cover this area here, this area here, and this area here, which is 421 underserved and unserved premises with a subsidy of $2,750,000, and then committed to, in the future, work to get grants to cover that large, those last two areas. And of course, they currently serve a significant amount of the county. So that's the Albany proposal. They focused on the Northeast. The Arvick proposed to cover much of what we would call the Northwest and the South, well, actually, all of the South. So they're really only leaving this section over here out of their proposal, but their proposal is to cover this whole area here. And that covers almost 3,500 underserved and underserved premises. And in their original proposal, they were looking to receive 15, almost $16 million in subsidy to do that. We've since then talked with them, and they are, they have committed to apply for $5 million in grants in the upcoming border-to-border. We think that'll be a strong application because it covers a large area. And of course, they are a current provider in the county. Midco, it appears they're looking at a small area, and you know, by comparing to those other two, it is a smaller area. But they already, and I'll get to this a little later, but they already cover a fair amount of this area down in what we would call the Southeast section. They actually have a fair amount of service over here in the Southwest, too. But their proposal here was to cover much of Rockville and a little bit in Main Prairie Township, and then some in St. Augusta. And they were looking for a subsidy of about $1.5 million to cover those 420 or so premises. Midco is also a current provider in the county, and I'll show you how they have service connected to this area in a bit. LTD Broadband, who does not provide service in the county now, proposed to cover the Southwest, the Southeast, and the Northeast areas. And their proposal was, you know, they had a different number for each one. The Southwest, a little over $2 million; Southeast, $3 million; and the Northeast, $4.7 million. And again, they don't have service in the county now, but they do have some interest, and they already have some federal grants that they're looking at spending within Stearns County. So those are the four major proposals. We had one with Mika Coop. And actually, they were upfront that they wouldn't, you know, they weren't going to try to get too far into the county. I still, I encouraged them to make a proposal, and so this is what they did. So it covers, you can see, 12, 9, 7, and 21, 21 underserved and unserved. Maybe some of this will come into play a little later, but at this point, I want to focus, focus us on the big picture. So this kind of portrays all the proposals. So you can see that much of what we were asking to be covered is covered by proposals, leaving this northwestern area is really the, oddly enough, the area we were somewhat focused on in the beginning. But, you know, it's a hard area to serve. But we would, we would continue to work with both Arvick and other partners to get coverage in that area in the future. So you can see, again, you got Arvick here, you got Midco here, you've got Albany Telephone here, and then LTD proposing a large, all three areas. So as I'm trying to portray, it does cover much of what we've seen as unserved and underserved. Again, leaving the far Northwest and some in the Northeast, that's, that would continue to be unserved if we were able to cover our, cover some of the proposals here. So, you know, again, this is already served, we're already served. So there's, I guess in short, I'm pretty pleased with the proposals we received because it covers much of the county. Now, this map's going to get a little messy, but I want to show you kind of what's already going on out there by way of plans, current plans by some, by the providers and some of the federal money that's being considered. And I'll make this map a little bigger, and I'll use the pointer again. So if you look at an area like this in the Southwest, that is a Midco, a federally funded area, and Midco has, they have that money approved, and they have fixed wireless service in that area. The area here, with the other hash, hash mark going the other way, is LTD. And that is the, is a result of the most recent ARDOF auction. So they have committed to cover these areas that you see with the right slash mark. I don't know what color it is. However, they have not received approval to receive those funds yet. Many of the ARDOF auction winners have received approval, at least they are receiving approvals now, but LTD has not been one of them. So you can see it overlaps some of the proposals here. This is a little closer look at the, at the Southwest area because this is an area where I'm not really completely sure where we will go. But you can see again here, this is all currently being served by Midco with fixed wireless. And then you have LTD areas here that are in question. They have committed to provide those services in the ARDOF auction process. Part of that process is they get vetted then, can, you know, does the federal government think that they can, they can perform? And they haven't been through, they haven't completed that process yet. And this shows the same area, but you see, here's Belgrade, here's Bruton. What Midco tells us is their range because of their fixed wireless towers. So that Southwest area arguably has decent service today, trying to find out really how good that service has been.
Mike, when they get these ARDOF funds, do they have a certain amount of time that they have to use these and get this completed, I mean, so it's not 10 years down the road?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, yes, they do, it's six years. Six, I think it's six, is it six or seven?
It's six years.
Six, okay, yeah.
So people could be out there six years from now yet without service?
Right. And so we kind of have the same thing going on in the Southeast area here. But the reason I wanted to show you this is, this is the, this, I think it's blue. The blue area here is the area of Midco's proposal. And these other areas are showing where Midco is either in the process of providing service or has service already. So you can see that they have a fair amount of service planned or in the works in that Southeast area, even with some, with the fixed wireless up in this area. So the coverage there currently and planned is better than the unserved and underserved map I showed you earlier. So I know that's all really fast and a lot of information, but we have put some thought to this. And in short, we would, I would like to see us move into having, pursuing some agreements with Albany for that Northeast area, Arvick for the whole area they're talking about, Midco for that Southeast area, and LTD for the Southwest area. And we have a bit of a financial plan. It's going to, it hinges on a border-to-border grant, it hinges on some township funds, but I'll show you that in a minute. But the whole project, if we did kind of everything that we've looked at here, would be over $22 million. But it covers much of the county. So as I said, we would need additional dollars to make this work. I've already talked with the city of Rockville. While if I calculate how many out premises they might have, they would probably be, I would rather they spend over $1 million. They did agree to spend all of their ARP dollars, so $350,000. So I don't know that we can expect anybody to spend more than any ARP dollars they got. Maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't, but that's where we are today. I've talked with the city of St. Augusta. If you do the premises numbers there, it's $84,000. Arvick has committed as a company to apply for $5 million in a border-to-border grant, which is a significant commitment because that's, that's as much as they can apply for in one area. And then I've done some projections about how much ARP dollars we would need from townships. And for this first phase of the project, it would be $800,000. And the bulk of that would be for the Arvick area, so that large tract, and the Albany Northeast area. So as you can see here, $200,000, I'm saying, would be attributed to Albany, and $600 would be to the Arvick proposal. And this is just a spreadsheet of how I thought about the townships. We haven't had significant conversations because we really didn't know up until now what the numbers would be. We do know how much they were able to access in ARP dollars. And so I've just done some projections here that if each township agreed to $275,000 or $275 per underserved, underserved premise that was going to be served, the dollars would somehow work out, the dollars would work out that we could cover this, the first part of this project. I also worked in here that, you know, that maybe there's a cap that we wouldn't want townships to have to spend more than a certain amount of their ARP dollars, for example. I really don't know until we have some discussions, when, tomorrow night, with the townships, where we might be able to take this. But I do know what the unmet, what the dollar amount is in need. So what I'm thinking about here is that if you have a, if one of the proposals covers the whole township, then we would request the whole, whatever the amount is. If it only covers a part of the township, we would request, say, half of that and have them reserve another half for when we can get into the next part of their township, something like that. So they know what the total cost will be in the, in the end, or at least what their total contribution would be. Again, this maybe just makes it a little more legible, but as you can see here, it's a $22 million total. And with the border-to-border grant and $800,000, and $350,000, and $83,000 from outside money, that's over $6 million, and that would bring us to $15,999,800. So we'll have $200 to spare. So, and we can go back and talk about any of these, but what I'm suggesting is that we move ahead and talk with the, particularly with Albany, Arvick, and Midco, and with LTD, and talk to them about, you know, that it's, that whatever we would do with them is contingent on them getting their federal, federal funding for that Southwest area. And of course, talk with townships. And I don't know how we, I've already been asked by at least the Township Association president of, you know, how would we, how would they be sure that their money is going to their township, to the project in their township? And that's why I did the per premise, that kind of thing. I don't know what we do if a township won't contribute anything. I think that's a difficult discussion to have. Even when I hear out there that there were at least one township, maybe more than one, that refused ARP dollars. So I, that's a question to me. I mean, we could, we could conceivably tell the provider to do a very limited amount in a township that doesn't contribute. That's about the only way I can conjure up an idea of what, how to do it. Commissioner Murray?
I did have one township ask me, and this is quite some time ago, as to what they could all spend this money on. They were thinking about not applying for it because they didn't know what they could spend it on. So, you know, there's that kind of situation going on.
Commissioner Murray, I know there was, and that's why at the time, we communicated with all the townships at the association meeting and in writing, requesting that they at least take the dollars because we knew that they could spend it on broadband. Now, since the final rules have come out on ARP, they can spend it on many other things as well, which might hurt our proposal here, because they could use it on roads, for example, if they wanted.
I noticed that township is on your list, so they did apply for it.
So I, this is, this is just more detail on, I don't think I need to do that, but this is, again, suggesting we pursue agreement with Albany, with Arvick, with Midco, and with LTD, with some contingencies that, upon FCC approval of their ARDOF. And I think we would need to make sure that we do that with some timeframe because Midco already has service in here, and I think we could probably work something with Midco as well. Again, the townships, and again, there's the, our kind of our final thoughts. So there's still a lot of unknowns, but as we told every provider, we're very pleased with their proposals. I know there's, you know, there's a fair amount of subsidy there, but they all say, you know, look, this is a rural area, and it's the only way we can do it. But all these proposals are fiber to the premise. It'll provide the best broadband service that anybody will have. And it does, in those areas where we would, still wouldn't have coverage, you know, we would just need to continue to, well, one thing we would do is we'd get these providers to commit to at least to apply for grants in the future to cover those areas. I mean, we would, that would be part of our agreement. But we could continue working. Commissioner Persky just gave me another idea about the Northwest area there that, with a provider we haven't talked to, that appears to be providing service close, so we'd have conversations with them. And I mean, this work would continue, although if it all worked out like we said here, our $16 million would be, would be spent, but I think well spent.
Does Diane have any addition, has she?
She very well might.
Diane, do you have any input you want to share?
I think Michael did a really great job of walking through the proposals and what the options would be. My only comments are that I echo Michael's comment regarding, we're very pleased with the outcome of this process, and a good portion of the county can be served with this initial round of proposals. I would suggest that we move forward with those negotiations and realize that there is additional funding that is still coming. And there's a very good chance, if we can implement this first round, that we would be able to receive additional funding for all of the remaining portions of the county that are currently not served. So I'm very pleased with this process. I'm delighted with the outcome, and I think that there's a really great path forward to get most of the county served with gigabit-type services.
And I think too, once, once you start seeing this build out, the outliers just outside of that are going to see this, and those residents are going to start saying, hey, you're right next door. You know, I think those conversations will probably open up if we can get this kicked in the gear and get it started, so. So any other comments by Commissioner, Commissioner Persky?
Mike, a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say, you know, nice job. It's nice to see all this stuff coming to fruition because, you know, with the money and the plan, and it's nice, at least we have a plan now and moving it forward, so thanks. I want to, I got a question about this sheet, so I don't know if you can pull it, pull it up? I got a question about this sheet, so I don't know if you can pull it up, the.
I don't know how legible it is, but I.
How do you read the underserved and, what do I want to say? The underserved there, and then it says per premise. What does that line mean?
Yeah, that's, the unserved and underserved goes back to that, to the map. There's a certain number of unserved and underserved. In each township, we've, our GIs folks have been wonderful with all this. They've calculated all that out and plotted it out. And so if you take the first one, Munson Township, there's 631 unserved. If we, if they give into the program $270 per unserved and underserved premise, that comes to 173,000. And that's, that's an example where they end up, I mean, it's a high percentage of the amount they received. They do not all calculate out quite like that, but, and so I know it's a cumbersome spreadsheet, but that's just what it is. And then so, so then over here, what I've said is, is, for example, well, use Munson Township, they're going to be covered 100%, by this proposal. So I would say we would want all of their dollars now. Collegeville, for example, the proposal is only going to cover part of it. So I say 65 now, but hold 65 in the future. That's just the concept of how I.
Okay. And what I understand, this is fiber to all these homes?
Yes.
When you get to the end of the line of fiber, can you push it out anymore with towers?
Yes, you can. And I think that, that's what we've talked about with that far northwest area as well as maybe Arbig would be willing to do that, or another provider would be willing to do that. And that's what we have going on in that southwest section is that's fixed wireless. So there's fiber going to those towers. And what Midco told us is eventually they would convert all that into fiber to the premise too. So that's why that southwest area has kind of been questioned too.
And in that northwest, you know, they have those windmills out there too. Can those windmill service towers? I don't know.
I don't know. That's a good question.
And then also.
Diane might be able to answer that.
All right. With the map, it ends right in the city of Sartell. Should it extend a little bit further of SOC, from SOC center here, the map? Just the way I'm reading it.
I don't, I would almost think the city of SOC center is covered by Arbig, but.
That's what I would think too.
And maybe it's just how it's drawn.
Who had the gray on?
It just might not be perfectly, a perfect depiction, but.
Yeah, because I think SOC center actually runs over to the, like, by the word SOC there, but.
Yeah, because when we, when we do the unserved, underserved, I don't think there were any in SOC center.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Okay. Well, it's optimistic. It looks good.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I think this is really very exciting. And, you know, poor Mike has been getting a bunch of different questions from me. So like, for example, in that northwest area, you in some ways just named it, Steve, is there any middle mile going through anything? I mean, do we have, where do we actually have fiber that's already laid and maybe in the short term, you're using other technology to get to folks? It wasn't until when we were out in, even though I've been doing a lot with broadband the last couple of years, it wasn't until we were out in DC this last week that I finally heard somebody go out of their way to say, the reason why fiber versus something else is because you need it for 5G and 6G isn't far behind and 7G. So, yeah, we, to the extent we can invest in technologies that are actually going to help our businesses and individuals get to the right, you know, to where we need to be great. And then Jeff, I, when you said six years, I mean, that's long, six years is a long time. I mean, so the faster we can get moving, it's just, when we think about the school kids not having, ah, you know, all the stories we've been hearing. So to the extent there is an opportunity for any other middle mile, that's something to consider. And then it was interesting, we had somebody from Commerce talking about that unlike some of the other federal funding, and right now we're talking about the grants, et cetera, but some other federal funding wouldn't have the same requirement that is out there for a lot of the other funds. Meaning, an ARDOF area maybe could have a second provider. So we may, I know that you know that now. I mean, there may be some opportunities there if we can't get something more quickly. And then I didn't see on here anything about reconnect dollars. Is somebody still going to apply for reconnect?
We were hoping that Albany would, and they, they looked at it seriously and were a little reluctant. They would rather do a border to border in the future. They have not worked with the federal programs. They looked at it seriously. Diane, maybe you can answer that question better.
And I know, I'm sorry, before you go Diane, I know that the most immediate ones, it's like right on us, the deadline is like tomorrow, so that could have been. But they were talking about releasing a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of new dollars. There'll be a fourth round coming up pretty quickly that might be something that could be feasible. So I wasn't sure if it was, if it was like a grant deadline that threw them off.
I mean, that came into play. I think if they would have had some experience with those federal programs, they might have been, plus there's some advantage to applicants that have accessed those funds in the past and they haven't. But they, Albany definitely committed to pursuing grants to cover that area in the future. So we know there's a border to border coming soon, and then there'll be another border to border hopefully this fall. And they've worked with that program.
Yeah, it sounds like.
But certainly, we need, we need to try to access those federal funds as well.
Right. And it sounds like there will be kind of a, you know, a really huge step up in both on the federal and hopefully state about what else might be available or will be available. And so the people from USDA Rural Utility Service and then NTIA spend a fair amount of time talking about that first sum. And this may be, you know, for Albany, this could have been the situation where they feel like there's a lot of head bumping because of who has been able to access. And they're trying to make a change in some of that so that, you know, folks can be more likely to. So Diane, I don't know if you have any other thoughts or comments about that, but that's something, it sounds like a bare minimum to keep looking at and.
Certainly. So the Albany telephone did look at the reconnect program, and I think the issue around timing and having it be due today was an issue. Reconnect actually pushed out the due date for this round of funding to the first week of March. So they gave applicants a little bit more time. But the reconnect program is really difficult to apply for. So number one, there is a preference where it's past borrowers. But number two, final design and engineering documents routes need to be included in the grant submission. There's some environmental review or NEPA work that needs to be completed. And so the application process is just a little bit more difficult than, say, the state grants or some of the other programs. And I know that they are working on trying to simplify some of the grant applications. But I think that's, you know, still in play for this grant round. Some of the older processes are still in place. So Albany.
By the next round.
Yeah, I think they thought that this would be a heavy lift for them to submit a reconnect grant. However, they did, as Michael mentioned, commit to applying for other rounds of state grants and/or potentially the first, you know, future rounds of the reconnect program or other programs. So as you know, there's a number of other programs that are available to fund broadband. Maybe the next one after reconnect where we'll see a substantial amount of funding available is the capital improvements project that's administered through the treasury. Each state will get a certain portion of that $10 billion that's available for capital improvement projects and broadband is a big portion of that. So I think that we'll see the rules of those programs be provided later this year. And so that's another round of funding. I'm not sure what the allocation is for the state of Minnesota, but it's over $100 million in additional grant funding that will be available. Each of the states have to submit their own plans in terms of how they want to spend that money and the process in which to apply for grants. And so that's in the works right now, and we'll have more information about that in the following months to come. So, you know, I think if anything, I echo what you're saying, Commissioner Clark, that there are a lot of other opportunities that will be available to fill in some of the areas that are not covered by this round of strategy. So I think that we have a very good chance of being able to leverage this investment. And you all are correct, it's much easier to build a fiber network, say, further into the northwest section of the county if we go forward with our initial plan to get a good portion of that built. And then potentially that could be leveraged either to connect some wireless towers or to further expand fibers to the premise to those areas that are not served with this round.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I didn't want to get too deep in the weeds on some of that. And even like with those state plans, I know there's a lot of concern, I think our state will be better than some about making sure that counties are getting to have input on what their state plans are, so the money actually does come back out in the areas that we know that it needs to. And very glad for the work that you're doing with us. So thank you.
Mike, maybe on, I don't remember from when we did the feasibility study, but there were some ARDOF dollars awarded years ago. Maybe on the next chart, you could put the expiration dates of those? Because I know there's some out in the west, when we did with Diane, the initial study. It'll be interesting, because some of them, that's been like three years ago, so some of them got to be coming close to the end of that six-year, you know, cycle, I guess. So it'd be interesting, the ones that have been awarded in Stearns County, when their expiration dates would.
Yeah, those were actually through the CAF program. And so Midco has afforded some funding, and I think that we're showing where they received that funding on the maps. So they implemented a wireless system with the use of CAF funds. The ARDOF program will probably have another round because the money has not been completely allocated. So we anticipate another round of ARDOF. And many of the rules that, like the reconnect program, if the ARDOF funding has not been authorized, meaning it hasn't received its final authorization from the FCC, or if it has not started construction, those areas are still eligible then for funding through the reconnect program. So I think that was a smart move on the NTIA and USDA programs to, and now the state's border to border grant program, to not disqualify those areas that have been initially awarded ARDOF funding but have not received their final authorization from the FCC. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Maybe just one more question. You know, that we included the townships, are there any small cities that would be, have ARP money that maybe don't have coverage or that are in these?
The two most significant are the Rockville and St. Augusta. Clearly, those are within their limits.
I was thinking more like Meyer Grove, Greenwald.
And they may be, you know, Greenwald, we haven't delved into this quite that deep to see if, if this, if they're getting better coverage because of this proposal or not. But we, it's a good question, and they did receive, they would have received some ARP dollars.
I was just curious, you know, when you put their population, how many are served? Because I think some of those are probably maybe 100% served by Arbig already.
Yeah, that's, that's why I haven't focused in on those quite yet, because I think they are already.
Yeah, just looking at Arbig's map, I got, I mean, you know, SOC Center Township, you know, you got the majority, it's just a relative few amount that aren't built out yet, so.
I think there would be precious few in those smaller towns.
I think so too.
As you know, St. Augusta and Rockville are much larger geographically, and, but it is, it is something we need to consider. It's just, we just haven't gotten that granular because I don't think there's very many that are going to be covered there.
Okay. Anything else you need from us at this point?
I don't think so unless, unless you think we should put the brakes on something or do something different.
I'm going to want to, and just, well, just be aware, this is a network, part of a network. And I'm going to want to know what adjacent counties are doing, you know? This, it doesn't do me much good to be able to talk to my neighbor down the block, but I might be in a position where, say I'm a small business and I have the opportunity to connect and do business with somebody in another state, maybe in another country. So to the extent you don't overextend yourself, yeah, please keep us abreast on what adjacent jurisdictions are up to.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, we're trying, I am trying to pay attention to that. And I got a little help from Commissioner Persky this morning on that. But for example, this SciTech proposal is just a little area right up here, and that is, actually, most of their proposal goes up north into Todd and Morrison County. They're applying for a reconnect grant, and we're looking for our support for this area. So I encourage them to, you know, show us that area and all of that. But if we go with the Albany proposal, that would be our, that would be our, where we would be putting our support. I'm actually hoping that SciTech is successful because it would cover me up north a little bit.
All right. Well, thanks Diane and Mike for the presentation, and we look forward to more positive news coming forward.
We'll bring you back when we have a more significant report. We'll come back.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Well, we're finally on to our last item. We're only an hour late, but, so our last item will be a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D, 0.03 subdivision 1B for discussion of labor agreements between County of Stearns and AFSMI Highway Parks Maintenance and AFSMI Human Services and Minnesota Nurses Association units for period of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024. So with that, we'll go into closed session. Oh, you mean the law! We're back in session from the closed session. So at this point, we're looking for a motion to ratify the contracts that were presented.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Must be fair. There's something in here for everyone to object to.
Okay, lastly, we have issues by commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
The only thing I've observed is with the new airport governance body in place, they seem to have an idea of how to enforce the payment for parking. Still, at some point, it just, I'm not telling them what to do. I'm saying, do keep a track of your cost of enforcement of the new parking regulations.
Okay.
Because sometimes what looks like a cash stream is really a gross number, it's not a net number.
Commissioner Mergen?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Clark?
You don't want to do, Commissioner?
No, we'll skip.
Actually, we probably could pretty easily do a NACO update. We had good meetings with our representatives and our senators, but given the time, I think we could probably even talk further about some of those specific items in the future.
Okay.
Oh, and I do want to just reinforce, since we now know there is an informational meeting on redistricting tonight, we want to encourage people to participate at 6:00 PM at the Wade Park Service Center.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes, the NACO conference, I think, went well. And you did get a packet from the folks that were here to talk about milk and honey, so, you know, give that a look. They've done some turns about the CUP and all that's affecting what's going on out there, so.
Okay. Well, and one other thing that maybe most people don't know, the farm show is going on today and tomorrow at the Rivers Edge Convention Center, so if you'd like to, go check it out.
Yep.
Mr. Williams, do you have something?
Just, just one thing you should have received this morning at 9:47, I see it in my box, from Kim Hawkins, the forms to do my annual performance communications. So you would all get those and submit those back, and then as, as in the past, they'll be compiled, and then the board chair and vice chair will sit down with me and chew me out.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll call this meeting adjourned.